Welcome folks. Look at you.
Power's gonna go to my head.
We are. Here we are about seven oh three on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth day of March. Special meeting of the council, welcome you all to this on that vision participatory democracy in O'Neanta. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order and perfect.
Mayor Drennan.
Here.
Councilmember Merkin.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Here.
Councilmember McHugh. Councilmember Lapari Shu.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Wooden. Councilmember Madison.
Here.
Do I mean allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So a slight adjustment in our agenda, I'll be providing my remarks, which I didn't actually do last week, this week, back at the top, and then we'll move to petitions. So appreciate your indulgence. So this slide, when we work together, we can do great things. Absolute fact, the strength of this community is shown when we're working together. We've had recent examples of some significant success when we have worked together. So this space that we occupy now, this council chambers, this opportunity for us to get together, at least twice per month to share our concerns and for the council to be considering and taking action, is a place that needs to be a safe place for discussion. It needs to be a place that is a respectful place for discussion. That is how we will collaborate by having respect and a safe place in which to have our discussions. So privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is accorded to all attendees, anyone who would like to speak at three minutes. Concerns, opinions, and information are communicated to the council for its future consideration or action. Petitioners must identify themselves and provide their full address. Petitioners may stand where they sit, they can stand, or they can use this podium, which we will now henceforth put in this position. Not great for the camera, but this is where you can base. And materials, if you have materials that you want to share with the council, hand it to the nearest councilman, and they will present that, you know, by passing along to the rest of the council. Disrespectful or personal comments or failure to comply with these standards that we just talked about will end the petitioner's time. Now, what does that look like? Later on in this agenda, we are approaching a number of different topics, and the topic tonight is our communications policies as council. Council is going to weigh in on this in a little bit. We had a retreat in which we talked about communications, intergovernmental communications, and communications to the community and how the community best can communicate back to us. And so this evening, we will talk about what the standards are. And we'll agree to those, there are standards that have been provided by our city attorney, and I thank you very much for that, David. And we also have standards that have been used by other municipalities. We'll either land on those or we'll come up with a run. So. You've heard me talk about this before, I've been talking about this for twenty-seven months that I'm here and when I ran for the petition. Twenty twenty-four, this is our moment, this truly is our moment on a historical timeline of O'Neanta, the deciding decisions that have been made that affected the trajectory of O'Neanta, we are in one of those moments right now. What we do today will be remembered and it will impact the generations that follow, Terry. So you're looking right now at a picture of Broad Street. Talked about Broad Street so much, here's Broad Street back in, looks like the early seventies based on the vehicles. So this is, I'm sorry, sixties, sixties, okay, anyway. Sixties, so in this picture, you can see where we already have some, some disrepair happening on Broad Street. But what you have here, when you just look at it, you can feel the vitality of the street. Now, this isn't Main Street, this is a different street than Main Street, but you could feel there's vitality there. Even as they decided to tear it all down, they tore it all down, and of course, the people who are living on Broad Street were no longer living on Broad Street. One of the things that's been impacting us these last fifty, sixty years is that we lost about four thousand people. As the people who attended our town hall know, we did that little history. And we've been in recovery mode ever since, we really do need to bring people back. And so that vitality that we had before, that's the vitality that we need to find ourselves with again, that's the goal, Terry. So I've talked about this and we talked about it in the town hall, and I just want folks to understand what we're talking about. Recruitment and retention, again, I'm like a broken record, I keep talking about the same thing every day, you know, it's the same exact words. Recruitment and retention, it means everything to the city, it means everything to the colleges, it means everything to the hospital, it means everything to every business of consequence here. If we can't recruit, we're gonna be in a really awful position in a few years because we will not have that generation that replaces some of us, who are not gonna be in the workforce much longer. We need to bring more people in and we need to retain the people we are bringing or are here because they're going to college or they've in some fashion found themselves in O'Neanta. We need to recruit and we need to retain, we need to do that, how? We need to do that becoming a walkable and attractive city. This is what people want, this is what a younger demographic wants. This is not like, I'm not making this up, this is the real deal. So what we want to do is we want to create a pedestrian-friendly connection to Neowar Park, to entertainment, to dining, and to shopping. The fifteen-minute city, where's the hero? It's not here, there, in the back someplace, the fifteen-minute city, that is in fact what we're talking about. So we're talking about Main Street retail. You see, this is Clinton Plaza, right here. When we pull the buses away from Clinton Plaza and bring them over to Market Street, where we're going, forty-seven Market Street, where we're gonna have the transit out, it's gonna mean that Clinton Plaza now has a front to Main Street that isn't obstructed by, by vehicles. People will actually see stores. And so we have something that is potentially incorporated, we can incorporate it into the larger view of what our downtown is. And that's one of the things that I promised Jackie Hunt, who's currently managing the Clinton Plaza, is that we are gonna bring them into our downtown. Not easy, because the very same nineteen seventies that tore down, you know, the, the Broad Street and all the other, you know, buildings that, you know, people grew up with, also tore this down, and of course, if you listen to the history lesson that was provided, what we know is that we were trying to create a sense that we're the suburbs. So we have a disconnect between our architecture and their architecture, can't change that. But we're gonna bring them into downtown, not gonna be easy because Chestnut Street is a bisect downtown. But we're gonna do it because it's important. And so we're going to have the retail district and we're gonna have, please Lord, folks will approve this tonight, the D Street Marketplace, which will be a constant entertainment and, and vendors and artists and performers, a calling card for us as we're trying to recruit people to come in, to visit us, to come in and live here. So that's, we need a hook, I mean, we need a hook. I spent, I spent literally seven hours in the last two days going business to business, talking about this. And the one hundred percent consensus is we're supportive, no, actually, we're really supportive and thank you for doing this because we're gonna die if we don't have which that. So, so that's the D Street Marketplace and then we are looking at, and I've been talking about this for the last two years and change, we've had a vision from the get-go of what Market Street is going to be. We need, if we're gonna recruit and retain people, we need to give them something to do, you know, something entertaining. And we have a blank canvas in Market Street. So that said, if we can put things on Market Street that are going to be engaging of people of every demographic, every age, we're gonna find ourselves in a place where we are going to be able to have sort of a symbiotic relationship to that which is above, which for instance, the Water Street, Water Street is gonna be twice as wide as it was. We're looking at stamped concrete, we're looking at strong lights above, we're looking at the potential, very real potential of that having cafe-style dining and the potential of entertainment that comes with that. That all by itself is gonna be a wonderful venue. So now you've got that and you've got, we have ARPA funds that, and Rafael Cason has done such an amazing job pushing the Jerry Jeff Walker Performance Venue Forward to get to a place where we can send it out for an RFP and have something designed based on a lot of really quality homework that was done by Rep. So we're talking about a performance stage here, and then finally, the hope is that we are able to bring from Market Street a pedestrian path that is, you know, at grade and goes over the railroad tracks and over a footbridge, pedestrian and bicycle friendly, that takes us to the performance stage, it's domestic field. So now you've got this amazing connector of the park and Market Street and Water Street and Main Street and D Street and the Mueller Plaza. Who doesn't wanna live that? I mean, that's a great place to live. And that's a very vital kind of a, a, a vision for the future of O'Neanta. So, Terry. The vision of Market Street. It's for a row of pretty buildings, pretty, seriously, pretty buildings, because we have, we have a code that kind of requires us to build pretty buildings. Now, not, not monolithic structures like one twenty-five main street, that's not gonna happen again. So we wanna have a row of buildings that are connected and have interesting storefronts and the potential of mixed, and that means affordable as well, and market rate, and potentially even hospitality on its upper floors, overlooking the park. I mean, overlooking the park and connected to a growing entertainment district, how is that not a developer's dream? The twenty-seven Market Street winds up being the cornerstone in the district's development. And so this is not the final, final, by any stretch, this is really kind of looking at what was twenty-seven Market Street, here's a draft of something that could be, but the idea is that one building built, that follows another, follows another, in the end, anybody who's ever lived in a city knows that suddenly you have a neighborhood, building after building, and a place to enjoy life, a place, you know, to visit, a place especially if we're successful in creating that kind of engagement district of Market Street. So I want to talk about the twenty-seventh Market Street project and how that checks the boxes. So relative to that vision of an engagement district, we're talking about maker's space, which is a creative, you know, opportunity for everybody, from the smallest, we don't have enough things for little kids to do in this town. There aren't enough, enough things for, for young people to do in this town, there aren't enough things for old people in this town. We need to have a space where we can be collaborative and connected and creative, and guess what? We are talking about mobilizing performers and visual artists, and if you are creating artistic content in a maker's space, bring it out. We want that, that just aids in the, that's the entire process. So that is the maker's space, moving on to our businesses. Our businesses need staff, right? I mean, everybody knows that we don't have staff for businesses. I had a whole bunch of coffee sessions during the daytime, I had beers at night the other night, but the coffees during the daytime, people couldn't come to in a lot of cases because if they closed the door, they closed their business because they didn't have staffs. We, we, at that most fundamental level, we don't have staffs. And so if you're talking about, I love talking to college students because they want your college degrees and this and that, it's like, guys, if you, if you don't have a workforce, I mean, we want industry, if you don't have a workforce, you don't have industry, right? I mean, right? So entry and mid-level employees, they need local housing and they need local housing that they can afford, not even paying fifty percent of their salaries to. That's, you'd be chasing a paycheck your entire life if you're not following the construct of thirty percent, right? So you also have professionals, I mean, who work for the city, who work for the, the, the colleges, who work for the hospitals, who work, you know, you, you, many of you people may be them. You may want to live in the city and you cannot afford to, the city would love to have its staff live in the city, but there aren't a whole lot of options. So one of the things that's been confusing to people, because they want to say, or just give me, tell me, is it, what's the income range from what, what? It doesn't work that way. So there's something called area median income. Area median income is, I don't know why, it's from zero to a hundred, the median is fifty, right? So when they're talking about area median income, they're talking typically about, you know, four-person household, that's the standard, and then it goes up or down from that, right? It goes up and down from that. So looking at the standard of a four-person household, using Atzigo County numbers from twenty twenty-three, those are gonna change. Every year they change, so the change in April, maybe, maybe May, but they'll change for twenty twenty-four, they'll change for twenty twenty-five. But looking at that area median income for a household of four, it's eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars. That's the area median income for the county. So what this project at twenty-seven Market Street through RSS as the developer, they're looking at thirty percent to seventy percent is that continuum from which, you know, that they will address, not below, not above, okay? So if you're looking at that, then you're also looking at one bedroom, two bedrooms, you know, if they offer three bedrooms, I don't know if they want to, but what is the maximum rent that you can charge based on thirty percent of that equation? That make sense, basically? So, so it changes, is it one person, two people, three people, four people, whatever it might be in your family? Terry. So for instance, as an example, come back to police officer. A police officer making fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars, that's our entry, right? Right, entry for police, fifty-one five? So fifty-one five, now, the police officer is a young guy, he's got a wife, it could work the opposite way too, but for this example, he's got a wife who's a freelance writer and a full-time mom, and she's pulling in five or six grand and she's, you know, that's where she is. And they got two young boys. So at fifty-six, let's say that they're making total, they land at the seventy percent area median income. So that means that they are, they are eligible. That's seventy percent, now they need two bedrooms because they have two boys, right? And they got their own room. So now that minimum, rather maximum rent that they can be charged is one thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars per this. That's what it is, that's thirty percent of the income by the equation, okay? So moving on, you remember, it's like three years ago, we had a pandemic, right? So, so who were we celebrating? Weren't we, I mean, the essential workers, let's say, I mean, right, 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 right? Well, they're making fifteen bucks an hour if they're lucky. So let's say they're making fifteen bucks an hour, thirty-five hours a week, that's twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. That's your essential worker. So that essential worker, fifty percent of it, and that's just one person, right? So looking at one person, the, the area median income on that is fifty-seven thousand two hundred. Well, they're making about half of that, right? So now there's a halfway. And so what will their apartment cost them? At the very most, it'll cost them seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. So they'll actually, instead, first of all, they may be able to live in O'Neanta now, which would be nice. Somebody who has a shop and would like to come in late and would like to have somebody cover for them, doesn't have to have somebody come in from Otigo, you know, to cover, maybe they could just walk downstairs and cover. In the meantime, these folks also are not spending fifty percent of their money or more on housing, so if they can find housing in the city. Now they are looking at a reasonable percentage of their income, so they should have, by this equation, some discretionary funds, which means that they can actually go and put money in the bank and potentially be supportive of our businesses. So right-sized rents is what it's called. For all of, and this is really, this phrase, all of our neighbors, these are our neighbors at twenty-seven Market Street, plus, we, how many people have said we need more mental health services in the city of O'Neanta? It's like, this is, like, this is the cry, right? We need more mental health services in the city of O'Neanta, this is what they do. They will continue providing mental health support for twelve to fifteen of our neighbors in RSS, by RSS. So what does that mean? So what RSS does, they provide twenty-four-seven supportive activities, case management, the case management is key to success, they do that, crisis intervention, and they ensure that service providers are collaborating in real time and people aren't going to appointments a week later to take care of an issue that they have right now. They have supported employment, you find that on their premises, they have a wellness warm line, what's that? That's peer support, hey, how you feeling today? Let's take it better. You know, whole health coordination, which is exactly what you think it is, and they have a community education project on their, in their building, which is resources for area. They'll have twenty-four-seven staffing to assist all the tenants and for all the tenants, not just these dozen or fifteen, and that'll facilitate the safety and security of the building. Which brings me to the economic impact. One of the things that makes me crazy is when the city, we've been responsible for this, sends money out of the area and it's gone. It doesn't come back, when we spend money in our community, it circulates and it, it impacts everybody, right? So circulating dollars in the community through local purchases, through employment of construction and maintenance and staffing, you add to that a sale price of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, you add to that water and sewer of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year as an estimate, Jenny's gonna give me a argument if I say that's empirical, it's an estimate, payment in lieu of taxes, which is payment. And, you know, in this world, where we are, with every municipality fighting to have a developer look at their municipality, you know what, if, if the developer says, I'm gonna need a payment, rather a pilot, this is, this is square one where you start from, it just is a fact. And increase OPT ridership, some folks heard, you know, the, the concerns that O'Neanta Public Transit has a few weeks ago, when we were talking about the decrease in, the decrease in ridership. We need a robust OPT, we do for a number of good reasons. So that would assist there and plus, as I said, supporting local retail and dining and then creating, adding to the potential new workforce. So that's very impactful, that's very impactful. And for me, that's everything, except it's not. Another impact of this has been the current discord, I'm looking at this crowd and so many people are friends for years, and we have absolutely heartbreaking sort of a, of a split in our community. And I talked about at the top here, collaboration is how we get there, we're a city of thirteen thousand five hundred, we have big aspirations, we need to work together. So what's important to me, more important even than this project right now, is having a united community. I tell you, I love this project, but my proposal is that we postpone until October twenty twenty-four any action, any action on sale of twenty-seven Market Street. So that's six or seven months depending on who you're talking to. In the interim, why? RSS has an opportunity to enhance the public education, we've found a lot of people who self-identify as kind of disciples, you know, essentially of the word, get, get the word out there, folks, and that's great, that's great. So the relationship building that they need to do, that RSS needs to do across all sorts of levels, from the highest to the lowest, that, you know, from, from the, the folks that are running the, you know, the agencies and, and government in the county through just everyday people. They need to be able to communicate their message more effectively than they have, and time is gonna allow them to do that. And then for the city, there are three huge deals here. Having an evidence-based review of the deed slots, we know that that has not gotten off to the best possible start. But you know what, if we know that and we ignore that, shame on us. What we see is that that has not gotten off to the best possible start, so we are doing things to repair that and to turn that around because we need that to be successful. We do, we need to be safe inside and outside, we need to be, we need them to be a part of our community. And they're, but honestly, there are twenty-nine artists there and I'm looking to put them to work, there's one of them right there, looking to put them to work, sorry to call you out there. But, but it's a fact, and we need to see how, we need to take some time to see how what we're doing to try to improve that building and that culture has effect. If it doesn't, that's a heads up, right? Maybe this, maybe this whole thing just doesn't work, like some folks have said, maybe this just won't work. But maybe it does, and we take a look to see what comes of this. And in the meantime, in just about two months or so, Springbrook, which is not operating off a very different sort of a scenario, is going to open. We need to also monitor and see how that lease-up goes and how well they do. And if we do that, then we can project with some sort of sense of clarity what we might be looking at, whomever it might be that develops twenty-seven Market Street. The other thing is, the council, I need to, to ask the council, I want to have the council invested in determining the minimum requirements of anybody that we sell this parcel to, doesn't matter if it's RSS or whomever it might be. What is it at a minimum that we are looking for? We paid a lot of money to make this thing shovel red, what do we want? The council, not me, but the council needs to have the discussion and determine what we are looking at at a minimum. And then the council is also, I think appropriately, we talked about developers haven't maybe had the outreach that people thought that they should. We have now time for the council to determine how do we want to reach out to developers and see what we have. You know what a terrible scenario would be, having four people say, I want to develop this property. I'll take, I'll take that, I really will, that'd be great, and then we can say what's gonna be best for the city. So that's what I'm proposing, I know, I'm pitching RSS hard, because I think it's great, I really do, I think it's a perfect, you know, use of this space. But I also know I can't have this, the city can't have this, the city needs to work together. We need to work together, we need to be a team again, we've been that, when we've succeeded, we've been that. We need to succeed, this is a very, very important moment in O'Neanta's timeline, we're gonna fail if we're, if we're, you know, torn apart like this. So with that, I would simply say, you know your councilmembers, you've all gotten very educated, which is great, connect with your councilmembers. Stay informed, you inform them too. And then this is my, mark, what is it, mayor@oneonta.nydus, I will always respond, like, you know, within the hour, I'm pretty good with that. Okay? I think the world of you guys, I really do, and I really think the world of this engagement, and I thank you all for being here. And I'm gonna get on with the meeting, I'm gonna try to figure out who will be over to that side of the house, all right, thank you.
It is being recorded, so it did an update, the OBS system that we used did an update, so the driver is not letting me go live, but I was able to get in through Zoom and record it that way. Yeah. It will be uploaded.
Much. Alright, at this point, where we are now, in fact, going to have our petitioners section, we have no public hearing. Right, nothing. So we're gonna go to petitioners, you've heard what I've asked you to do, please. Council will kind of put more of a, a finer point on, on, on all of that a little bit later on, but if you'd like to speak, raise your hand, let me know who you are, I have somewhere around here, maybe I don't have them here. I have my countdown, apparently I don't have the paperwork here, you just have to watch me. Three minutes, I'll let you know at the two-minute mark, okay? And then, you know, we'll just, hopefully you'll be able to wrap up within those three minutes. Alright, so name, address, and once we start, name and address, we'll start on your three minutes. And I appreciate every one of you, so let's, let's, let's have it. Who would like to speak? Yes, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Alex Fisher, I'm a licensed massage therapist, I do not live in O'Leant, but I do rent an office here. It's at ten Market Street. And when I told someone that, they said, oh my God, that's right across our twenty-seven Market Street. And I said, great. Because I think the whole plan to make O'Leant a walkable and to make Market Street someplace that you wanna be, is gonna bring me business. And it's gonna make, give me a chance to show and who I am and have people come to me. I think that, I was looking at the numbers you put up before and I was realizing that I was there in that thirty percent mark right now. I were up here. And I know what it's like to be there, I'm also thirty-seven years sober. I also know what it's like to be newly sober, that was a long time ago. But I needed a lot of support. And I'm so glad that this plan includes support for people who want to make a go at life and making money and having what they need. And do I have any time left?
You do.
I will cede my time.
Oh, no, we don't do that, no, there's none of that. But I appreciate the thought.
Thank you very much.
Alright, have we somebody else who would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Tava Burnett, thirty-three Academy Street. And I, I am a person with disabilities who lives here, so this is my backyard. And I vote. And I'm a former RSS employee as well, I worked at a bagel company from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-seven. And I'd love to walk down O'Leant and see and I'd go to where my supports are. And right now, what, I saw that first sign of the place where I can do that because last Saturday, I couldn't. No, not without standing, but there was just no place I like go anywhere and hang out. And I would love to see a place to go to be with people, to be in my community and to bring in more people like myself who are trying to get services and maybe get off of assisted living or subsidized living and into real housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have we somebody else who'd like to speak?
Are you gonna do an executive session or is that off the table now since you're already in October?
I would, I'm not gonna call for it, because I, I feel like it's redundant. A council member could always call for it. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, Brian?
Yeah, there's a group of us that wanted to speak back to back about RSS. Yeah, I'm Brian Shaw, I live at six North Moon Circle. I also own property on Market Street.
Yeah, just, just hand it to, to Don, Don will pass them around.
Behind you. Like I said, I own property on Market Street, I'm here to talk about the Market Street reconstruction and street project.
Right, Brian, Brian, Brian. Yes, please, thank you. Appreciate it.
So there is, just to introduce everybody who's gonna speak after me, we're all property owners on Market Street. There's three other people that are gonna speak after me, all, all about the same thing. All of us are you know, we're, we're excited too about the Market Street project, however, there's, there's some issues with the, this project encroaching on driveways and the city being like very aggressive with changing entry-weighted parking lots and cutting off driveways and there, a lot of this is like really minor stuff and I really wanted to get this resolved. You know, I met, it was a big meeting yesterday with a whole bunch of Market Street property owners. Greg Matisse, Chris Jeff Bucci, two, two of the council members there, Luke and Don. But yeah, this is really not something that should be brought in front of like fifty people. This is something that I really wanted to resolve at the, the meeting yesterday, but we compromised on a couple of things, but there's still outstanding issues. Do you, the council already knows kind of what's going on, there's been some emails floating around between council members. So if you guys could just look at the, the top picture, this, this driveway right here, labeled driveway between twenty and twenty-two Market Street. That's one of the, the issues. That's, that cannot be blocked, that's been a driveway like that for a hundred and thirty years. You know, we, I can fit five cars in there. And that absolutely cannot be blocked, city cannot just come in and take that driveway. And, you know, that's something I'm, I'm gonna be fighting for, because like, like I said, it's the city doesn't have authority to just come in and put a curb and block that driveway. Again, this is something that should have been dissolved in yesterday's meeting, but Greg says he wanted to bring it before council and have the council make a decision on that. The picture on the bottom, eighteen Market Street, that parking lot, unfortunately, we were able to resolve that through negotiations. And again, the city wants, you know, initially, they wanted to really narrow the entrance into that parking lot, it's a fifty-three car parking lot. The, you know, the entranceway is I think we agreed for twenty-two or twenty-four feet. The, so yeah, we're, we're good with that, it's just the, that driveway between twenty and twenty-two Market Streets we really need really need to look at. On, on page two, we have some distorted pictures showing that driveway goes back, back when there were like horses and and on the third page, we have the code, so there's, there's code that the city cannot shouldn't, shouldn't violate its own code.
Alright, thank you, Brian. I, I have a sense that we have a conga line, so Tony, you're next. Tony, would you introduce yourself?
Tony Allenzado, fifty-eight, sixty, Market Street. Thank you, council, for being here and listening to us again, but you know some of the votes and I'm just with some of the stuff we talked about. And I wanna say, Mayor Mark, I'd love your presentation, because you said when we work together, and I really like that. And that's huge because that's why my brother and I, my resident here is when we work together and not the city alone. Okay, so let's hit that. And the other thing I liked that you said about respect. And that goes both ways, okay? Taxpayers and, and you got it. And the first picture you showed, I, I shout out to you, that was a sixty-four Chevy in there, that's why I think it was a sixty. But as, as you saw the picture going down that water, there was our Stella Luna building. And you can see even back then, in the sixties, the cars were parked this way. And you guys know, you know, with the drawings you guys tried to do, take away two mile entrances and, and, and redo the parking that you said, but you guys already know that, okay? The question to the council, I don't know if you guys can, able to talk, but at least raise your hands. How many of you have physically gone down to check our properties, all the, the different driveways that we're talking about? Since, since this all started. So you know, you know, everybody, right? So you, you understand our predicament, of being take, having those data. What I like, what Len, Len said last week when we were watching, is that a lot of times you guys aren't really informed on stuff or at last minute. And that's really important, you know, somebody's gotta take that leadership and allow you guys to be well-informed before you make these decisions, you know? Basically, you know, there's teachers in here, like, do your homework, right? And this meeting should have been done a long time ago, you know, we should have been more informed, informed. But moving forward, which that's what we've done, okay? Is we're here to resolve this. And, 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 you know, I commend that Chris and Scott has been there and Luke and I forget who else was there. We've met, we met there even yesterday. And we're trying to resolve this. You know, we said, this is what we want, we'll compromise with this, and it's gonna twenty-two feet and sixteen feet. And that's what it's all about. And, and that's why I commend you, Mark, for saying that it's what it's all about. We're not here to fight. And the RSS here, you know, I, I also approve all this, I approve all this in, in town here. We're not here to fight, we're not here to work together to make this community better for all of us. You know, and not just, let's say, the RSS people. But, you know, the RSS people have to be held accountable too, okay? And the people who live near have to be held accountable. Real quick, Mark, before, yes, one minute.
No.
But real quick story, there's a winery in Italy, alright, years ago, a winery, okay? And this is off the, off the cuff, a winery in Italy, what they, this guy did, they, he took all the addicts, the homeless, the mental health people. He took them all in, okay? He created one of the best wineries in wine, so he helped everybody accountable. They worked, they, they were proud, he, he commended them, he gave them housing and everything, but, but they had to work, they had to do something for themselves. And it produced such good people, and after a year, these people either moved on or stayed on. And that's what it's all about, right? It's also being held accountable. If we have, you know, the homeless or the addicts who are going to be helped, everybody, we have to hold people accountable.
Thank you, Tony, thank you, Tony. And next up we have.
My name is Chenzu Allenzado.
I give my three minutes.
Sir, I'm gonna read a little bit, but before I read, last Tuesday, as a, as an Italian, I wanna apologize only because I'm very loud and I think some people took it offensive, but it was not offensive. It's the way we eat at home, the way we talk at home, we deal with luck, okay? So anyways. And council, last week, I showed you guys everything, we talked about how this was unfair. We were never notified, we were never told anything about what was going on with this. I found, I live in Connecticut now, I found out three weeks what was going on. I yelled at Mr. Matisse and I apologized to him the other day because we had two days, as my brother said, a very good, very good talk, okay? And I hope tonight you guys all realize that the Stella Luna was going to be closed in and we were gonna be left alone with one way in. Now, two days in a row, we talked about it and I'm gonna tell you what was said, and I hope tonight you guys realize that what Mark has been saying about working together, this is what it should happen and what it, what we hope will happen. One entrance, you can't close me because it's an easement for the railroad if we're people to go to drive through. The other two parkings, we have agreed on, in the middle, instead of twenty-four feet, they're gonna break. Excuse me, bring it down to sixteen feet. And the other entrance, instead of twenty-eight feet, we bring it down to twenty-two feet. Now, my brother and I have agreed to that and I hope that Mr. Matisse and the rest of O'Leant, uh, council here, go buy it, go buy it. And please, because I have a Mexican, I have an Italian, and I have an Indian entrepreneurs interested in doing something with my building. This is my life, this is my brother's life, and I don't need this to be closed to me, I need this to open because everything Mark said today, I was saying this for the last fifty years that I lived in this town. And we gotta work together, not against each other, please. I'm not gonna say anymore, I didn't even read this. But I'm entrusting you guys because I don't live here anymore and I hope all of you, you were at the first meeting, you heard about the Board of Public Service, what they'd said. Please, guys, realize, you wanna work together, you wanna work this, do it right, because we will not stop. The Evans Autos will not stop if we get blocked in.
Thank you, Benny, thank you, Benny. And we have.
Angela Postolakis, seventy-market street. I'm gonna keep mine short and sweet. Me, gate, I I asked not to make any changes only because I wasn't notified when this project was being discussed and I could have worked with the city to alter the design of the fence and the gate. So I asked to please do not touch the main entrance. We have a delivery section, an emergency drop-off, and then the the gate to enter the property. For the exit of the property, I am willing to bring it down to twenty feet. That will give more room for your sidewalks and your parking spots. The middle driveway, I'm asking to please keep it at twenty feet. You have to understand, the tenants who live in front of the building, you have mothers towing young children trying to bring groceries in, you have whatever the scenario may be, that's the only place where tenants who live in front of the building can move in, move out. I understand there will be extra parking on the sidewalk, but there's no guarantee that the parking spots will be available for the tenants to use to move in and out and unload whatever they have to unload. Plus, we also have a control delivery. So I'm just keeping mine short and sweet, anybody has any questions, please reach out to me and I'll be more than happy to.
Thank you very much, Angela, and have we, anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes.
Ron Martinez, seventy-market street. She forgot to say that. That middle parking lot, the middle driveway, that middle driveway, we're actually, the, the idea for that driveway was supposed to be to, to continue to make, finish up our driveway for the people who are building up, have a safe spot to pull into, you know, unload and load. And that comes down on the other side, so it'll be, it'll be, you know, finish up, and we were speaking to Coach today and we already discussed that. So we're gonna work on that too, so.
Very good, thank you very much.
There was also an issue with the, with the drainage.
Mark, I, 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 just once, one more thing that I honestly forgot to talk about, it'll take a second, please thank you. I had a picture to show all of you, two thousand and, I know, two thousand and six flooding, okay? Flooded the front of my Stella Luna restaurant. We had problems. And seventy.
Alright, thank, okay, thank you, I, I hear you, thank you very much. Have we anybody else who would like to speak? Yes. We have like a new toy in the room now.
So my name is Catherine Hiliad, I am a Heartwick College nursing student and I have lived at Seven Normal Ave for the last three years. First, I just wanna thank the council for the time that you have taken to understand the RSS proposal in full and to listen to all of the voices of O'Leant, not only the loudest, and to separate information from misinformation. I hope that you will vote now in favor of this project, as I truly believe the development of twenty-seven Market Street has the potential to be a major and needed catalyst for change in O'Leant. It is important to remember that all change at first is scary, even positive change. Over the last three years, I have spent a significant amount of time working and as a student in local hospitals. In that time, I have seen firsthand how often patients are readmitted with mental health and substance abuse disorders and how long they can spend waiting in the hospital because we lack a housing option that fits their need. There is a major gap in the continuum of care, in particular, of transitional supportive housing for individuals who are ready to live independently and begin to reintegrate into the community. For individuals who are ready to live independently and begin to reintegrate into the community, but who need additional support in order to be successful. I didn't get involved in this conversation about twenty-seven Market Street because of an idealistic sense of social justice. But because in this proposal, I see a possible solution to an acute need in this community and that gives me hope. I know you're faced with a difficult decision, I'm also faced with a difficult decision. In less than three months, I'm gonna begin a career in which I can go anywhere because I'm needed everywhere. I, along with fifty fellow classmates at Hartwick alone, will be deciding whether to stay and work here or move somewhere else. Something I'm looking at as I make this decision is what kinds of community resources exist. To support the work we do as nurses from outside the hospital. I understand that strong community resources can help prevent acute mental health and substance abuse crises. And help rehabilitate individuals after these crises occur. I want to work in a community that I feel comfortable discharging patients into. Knowing that when they are ready for the next step in their recovery, it's there. Mental health and substance abuse disorders don't justify the patients I work with. I'm about to enter a profession that puts me at increased risk for substance abuse due to the combination of high stress, workplace injury and access. Working in healthcare for the past four years have already shown me the toll this work takes on mental health. As I enter this field, I wanna know that I'm in a community that not only supports my patients, but that also supports me. It's too easy, I think, to other people that are or would be clients of RSS. When in reality, any one of us or someone we love could find ourselves in need of this kind of service. I'm only. I'm only one voice, gosh, I'm so sorry, but I know you guys hate for many other new graduates and young professionals. Homelessness, substance abuse and mental illness are everywhere. We're not looking to live in a city where those issues do not exist. But we are looking to live and work in cities that are implementing creative and data-driven solutions to address them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Danny?
I'm sorry, before you start, I just apologize, I thought it would be helpful for me to visualize, I didn't realize my phone was gonna make a million.
Are you three minutes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Careful, turn you into the timekeeper. Yeah, no, you're, you're all good, you're all good. Danny, introduce yourself and.
Danny Laffin, free college teammates, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not my employer, the Department of State. I just wanted to first start off by expressing frustration that correspondence for the second meeting in a row. But for two meetings in a row wasn't written to the record, it does a disservice to those who took the time to write letters. And also, let's, um, grace and not even playing field for those seeking to positively engage in city planning issues. So today, that said, I wanted to thank the city for its strong leadership over the past eleven years under two mayors. Related to housing and economic development in the city. In twenty thirteen, the city did an assessment of its housing conditions and its comprehensive housing plan. It leveraged the finding from that report to secure a ten million dollar award through the DRI. The first round ever in two thousand and sixteen, under government, former Governor Cuomo. The city reassessed its housing conditions in twenty eighteen and again in twenty thirteen. Developed long-range plans to address those housing issues in twenty nineteen. Which said, you know, defined the city as opportunity, Oneyanta, meaning we have opportunity for us all and I for one have experienced that opportunity. We recognize that there's a lot of unnecessary red tape around business and economic development downtown. To that effect, my good esteemed friend and colleague Steve Yearley, former colleague Steve Yearley. Created a form-based code which eliminates a lot of that red tape. Okay, so, that said, you know, what's a bunch of plants if you don't do anything? The city is on the verge of adding eighty-eight new units of affordable housing totaling nearly forty million dollars in private investment. That represents almost one and a half percent of the city's housing stock. And puts the city in prime position to receive certification through Governor Hokel's Pro Housing Communities Certification. Or Pro Housing Communities Program Certification, which opens up six hundred and fifty million dollars in economic development grants that the city can now apply for. And the city has previously applied for and received. With the addition of the RSS project, the city has the potential to leverage an additional twenty-five million dollars. Representing a total of sixty-three point six million dollars in the past few years alone. I commend the city for doing it right, you've taken eleven years to figure out what you wanna do for housing. And you've taken your time to really analyze, pay consultants, do a lot of public engagement and figure out what it is you wanna do, so thank you. The city continues to show that it values its residents, wanna make Oneyana a home, I for one and my wife have both received the benefit of Oneyana's grace and welcome. You know, we felt that truly, but it also shows that we shouldn't, the city prioritizes allowing people to spend less on rent and more in the community, so thank you. I'm thankful that the city eliminated the importance of cutting red tape, long-range planning, equitable public engagement. And transparency and clear leadership, so thank you, City of Oneyana, I appreciate everything you do and continue to enjoy working with you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Julie?
Good evening, um. I'm gonna read a letter that I read for you guys. Now the world, I apologize, um, I'm Julie Docso, I, I'm Executive Director of the League Council on Alcoholism and Addiction. And tonight, I'm here with a different hat on. Um, I'm writing on behalf of the members of the Oxyco County Community Services Board, otherwise known as the CSB. And two of its subcommittees, the Addiction Subcommittee and the Mental Health Subcommittee. All members of the CSB and its subcommittees are volunteer positions appointed by the Oxyco County Board of Representatives. The committee has statutory responsibility to support and advise the work of the Director of Community Services, also known as the DCS. And oversee the addiction, mental health and visibility services for Oxyco County. The CSB is aware of the ongoing discussions around the housing and retail space development proposal for twenty-seven Market Street in Oneyanta. We are also aware that there is a potential for a small number of units that may be utilized to provide affordable housing for those we serve. Who have been stabilized and are ready for permanent housing, we are strongly in favor of such a proposal. We would like to clear up some potential misunderstandings about the population that we serve. As well as state why we have taken the position that we have taken to support the project. First, any member of the CSB who works with the developers' agency or has other conflict. Has recused themselves from voting as it relates to this statement. It was reported in a local paper from a community member that Oxyco Mental Health was not in favor of the project. The Director of Community Services made no such statement and there is no one else authorized to speak on behalf of the agency. The CSB supports moving forward with the project. Much concern has been raised that persons in recovery might struggle by living close to bars and a dispensary. We appreciate the concern of those who care about the people in recovery. Please be assured that based on our professional experience, we do not carry those same concerns. People in recovery can and are successful living in proximity to bars and package stores. Additionally, the clinics for mental health and addiction are all, are both located on Main Street. Those proposed, the proposed development will be within easy walking distance of those services, we see that as a net positive. Housing has been and likely will be for the foreseeable future, one of the most significant issues for those of us, for those. Who have begun their journey to a healthier life. This proposed development offers hope to a small handful of individuals to finally have stable, permanent housing. Stable housing is highly correlated with successful recovery from addiction and mental health issues. Like all nonprofits in the region, our agency struggle mightily with recruitment and retention of employees. One of the major factors related to that struggle is lack of affordable, affordable housing for young professionals. Even young professionals with college and advanced degrees. This development will provide additional options for our staff members to live, eat, play and work in the same neighborhood. That is a win-win for the service delivery system and for the financial health of downtown. Thank you for your time and on behalf of the CSB, thank you for the opportunity to participate in local government. My colleagues and I stand ready for any questions the council may have in relation to our position on this issue, thank you.
Thank you very much, Joel, have we, somebody else who would like to speak? Yes.
My name is Chip Holmes, I live at fifty-three Dean Street, I also own, uh, well, my wife and I own, I need this. One forty-two to one forty-six Main Street, uh, we own the working kitchen, which we work out at eighteen Water Street. Uh, we moved downtown with a lot of help from the city, uh, we were part of the micro grant. Uh, that helped us come from East End where Brooks took over our plaza. And we've always wanted to come back, grew up in Oneyanta and I live on fifty-three Dean Street, I grew up on twenty-three Hager. Now my time's up.
Oh. You're good.
Um, but this will be quick because if you're gonna postpone some of it, then I can go into all this, but this is what I have for you, a little bit of math. And this is where it comes down to me, I have no doubt that RSS does a wonderful job of what they do. I understand it's needed in the community, uh, all the services and I know, I, I was on council when. Bassett shut Box's mental health down and Dick Miller was picked and he did everything he could to get them to open it back up. And I know Oxyco County is lacking on the county level and the county leadership to take care of the business that needs to be taken care of. But they're making it Oneyana's big problem, I'm a business owner, a small business owner with a kid in college, one going to college and my wife and I started with nothing. We built what we have, so here we go, housing vision, deep street law, four block, uh, hundred and forty-seven units just came in recently, really. They pay a total of a hundred and forty-two and I rounded up thousand dollars in their pilots. Okay, my math might be a little off, but now we have till October for Jenny to correct me, which I know she will, because I know she knows numbers like anybody. Um, hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in pilots, okay, we get about thirty-two percent of that, that number might be a little bit off, but that's about forty, forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Now, we're talking about taking out an eight million dollar bond for a transit hub, whole nother story, never understood that when I was on council, I thought it was a joke. But it's pushing forward, don't get it, three buses a day needs an eight million dollar project, that's a whole nother story. So forty-five thousand, an eight million dollar bond, according to Jenny is, uh, the service debt is four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars a year for thirty years. Take off the forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, now what I'm envisioning is another hundred and forty-seven units to go down Market Street, right? So we're gonna have RSS, we're gonna have the bus transit hub and then we're gonna have more mixed-use housing of all different income levels. I'm not against any of that, but I will say this. That and a pilot, and I love to argue with Danny, Danny likes to throw a pilot out, most people don't understand how a pilot works. They're guaranteed never to pay more than what's in the pilot until like forty years from now, a lot of them. Okay, so, we have forty-five thousand to the city, a little bit, the rest of the hundred and forty-two thousand goes to the school district in the county. So you take four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars of service debt, you subtract the forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. That will be our part of the pilot, that leaves four hundred and seventeen thousand and ninety-three dollars. Four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that you're adding to the tax bill for me, my neighbors and your constituents. You need to knock on every door and say, are you willing to spend, the city will, will add four hundred, that doesn't include adding a police officer. That doesn't pay down debt, a fire, it doesn't help our parks, that's additional debt to build up Market Street to this dream of a walking community. Now, I'm glad we have till October to figure this out because we wouldn't need all the grand money if people really wanted to walk everywhere. I mean, let's face it, I live here in Oneyanta, it's a little.
Yeah.
So I'm glad we have till October, those numbers, please, I hope I'm proved wrong, but I can't afford more in taxes and still open my business, okay? So that's the part that's gonna hurt Oneyanta and you're gonna be replacing, not just bringing people into Bill, but you're gonna be replacing a lot of people if we don't, kind of change their mental.
Thank you, Chip. Have we anybody else who would like to speak? Yes.
My name is Stacy Mitchell, I did my first visit at nine Hickory Street. Um, I was just gonna. Talk about, I, I was in Cooperstown, I do the. Errands up there on Mondays and I was listening to this conversation. Of people in Cooperstown having this conversation next to me and, um. They were just a little perplexed about the politics. And that's happening right now in our town and they were saying, hey, it's just, it's strange, right? Stach coach gets pushed out, that was their perspective. And there's gonna be maybe, you know, a, a vote happening soon and considering. Not going forward on a twenty-five million dollar project. And talking about some of the smaller towns in this county struggling and saying. You know, wow, what a problem to have and they're gonna let it go possibly. And, you know, some of what I think the concerns are in that dialogue. That I was hearing is that there's been a multi-year process that's been occurring. And to put that on the sideline and maybe start from scratch, maybe nothing happens. Um, to have a twenty-five million dollar construction project. And nothing immediately in the pipeline to supply, to replace that. That, that it would be bringing significant amount of money in some, uh, construction jobs. Uh, in the near future and that will be put on hold, um, new sources of sales tax on hold. Um, not supporting the most marginalized in our society on hold. Um, those struggling with addiction, you know, on hold and, um. I think the RSS proposal is a sound proposal, I think it's a reasonable so. Proposal and there's been a lot of research and data that has gone, um, into this project. And RSS has been proven to be a worthy nonprofit that has done great things for our community. And so, if the vote does occur, um, in the near future, I think a yes vote is one, thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. Have we, anyone else that, um, would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name's Toby, um, I live on thirty-three and a half Ford Avenue.
Toby, what's your last name?
Marvel, sorry. So, yeah, I, um, just. They're not as smart as the last few people that spoke, um, but yeah, just, uh, speaking for like the RSS project, uh, I'm in early recovery right now. Just feel like this, um, this time just really benefited something like that. Um, speak louder, sorry, um, and I, uh, yeah, just, um. You're just being, you know, in, in recovery groups and dealing with, uh, just interacting with that community, just. I've heard a lot of people like speak on that. It's just like, there's a lot of like dehumanizations when talking about that community and you actually. Spend time with them or like, you know, it's just like, they're just kind and sensitive people that are not so great, like taken on. You know, um, problems as well as others, so, I just, I, I just really think, um, yeah, that. Super benefit of this community, it, it seems like there's, there's a lot of that. Uh, sorry, just, yeah, um, anyways, yeah, just be good.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes.
Hello again, neighbors, my name is Elaine Mojer Campoli, my pronouns are she/her. I live at four seventy-one Main Street and I, um. So I just, I wanted to start off by greeting everybody as neighbors because I know we are and I see, I know a lot of you guys, you know, around and, you know. Into each other and the community because that's the way it happens here, right? So today, I am presenting a petition that we gathered two hundred and twenty-three signatures for. Um, and even more support still coming after that, but we officially have two hundred and twenty-three. Uh, signatures that I turned into the clerk earlier today, this petition reads. We, the residents, business owners, employees, students, shoppers and frequent visitors to Oneyanta. Are in favor of the City of Oneyanta Common Council members voting to grant rehabilitation support services, RSS. The ability to purchase twenty-seven Market Street, Oneyanta. We support housing that offers diversity and serves those making seventy percent or less of the median income, which is forty thousand dollars or less. In the City of Oneyanta, the housing of fifty units would include fifteen units designated for those who are now thriving despite a history of mental health. And addiction challenges, the other thirty-five units would be designated for our minimum wage workers, our students. Our veterans, among others, whose annual income is under forty thousand a year. This community housing project will meet all five goals established in the City of. This community housing project will meet all five goals established in the City of Oneonta's housing development plan. We believe that when we support each other, we become a stronger community and as a result, we all benefit. So I also want to thank the council for, um, continuing to work through this process. I do have a little disappointment that there's a delay. Um, but, uh, you know, I know that the pro housing community pledge was approved and I'm very excited about that, you know, and how it focuses um, the city on affordable housing that's accessible and as well as supportive housing and creating policies, planning and development that will support that. Um, in addition, I know that the city has worked through a lot of reports and assessments, including the comprehensive plan. Um, and, you know, lots of, uh, housing studies, Danny already mentioned, the rehabilitation initiative. And I do wanna point out the, um, the Market Street timeline that the city released recently was really helpful. Um, in understanding the progression of what's happened there, um, because I do see that that property, I, you know, has it is a place that we've been looking to develop for a long time and I hope that, you know, we will be able to move forward with that.
I think we may be done, Elaine.
What's that?
Good to go?
Good on time, okay. So I just wanna again call out that, you know, what we're looking for here is to work together as a community and we have a lot of, we do have challenging issues that we need to talk about together and they're complex and we know that. And there are different pieces in that and I know each of us represent different things like the Narcan program, warming station, the Oneonta Safe, um, community, uh, group that is meeting. And a lot of us have been talking about, how can we make this a community conversation? And I heard a lot of that coming out in some of what was being said before. Because working together and it's the people here who make this city vibrant.
Thank you. Have we anybody else that would like to speak? Um, Louisa. Oh, no, Wendy, okay.
My name's Wendy Hunt. Came to Oneonta back in nineteen eighty three and now live in Franklin, where I left the area for ten years and getting back to the City of Oneonta, which is in a sad, sad state. These are my friends, my neighbors, people I have known for years. And in the past several months, this community has been so divided. And it is really sad. Nobody on the side of going against RSSF being on Market Street has anything against anybody requiring the services. Every one of them has helped people out. Every one of them has spoken to people in their house, but the fight has been RSS and not RSS. RSS does have another property right here in the City of Oneonta to develop. And yet the mayor has pushed for it to be on Market Street because he didn't want there to be a disagreement if he went and pushed it on the other location. And now we're at this point where we've split our community. This makes me really, really sad. I'm glad that he's being pushed off, but you should look to this group. This is not a divided group. But it feels divided at the moment. These are all neighbors. They've all helped each other for years.
Thank you. Have we anybody else that would like to speak? Louisa.
I have a presentation that we've postponed the, uh, decision now until October. Um, thank you for the presentation and showing.
Did you just need to identify?
Um, I, I wrote a letter. There's a lot of information here. I'm not gonna read the entire letter because there's a couple of points that I wanna make and include them too. Um, what others have said tonight, but points that I looked at and talked about, you know, the low income housing, again, in state, the eighty percent actually got the calculations right because we added the number from what the county reports. We have the county number that's, uh, fifty three units that are being housed from the GSS. Um, the SRO, single occupancy housing, the shelter, the emergency, uh, housing, short-term housing and halfway houses in the City of Oneonta. The total number in the City of Oneonta is six hundred and twenty seven units total in the county. And it's, right now it's eighty percent of the low income subsidized housing right in the City of Oneonta. He, uh, Steve yearly, I don't know if he's here, but he had mentioned that we had reached our, our quota for low income housing in Oneonta, so I really ask you to look at that. Um, there are additional informations that I have reached out. I actually went through all the, the committee meeting, um, notes from um, the Atsigo County Board of Representatives. We are not holding the county accountable. They know that we have waiting lists of six months for individuals to get into services. It makes a point for RSS to be able to help us. RSS is not gonna be able to handle another two hundred and forty individuals. That housing unit will only be for how many individuals? Fourteen people in recovery, fifty two for low income housing. We still don't have the resources. So it behooves us to take a look at, um, seriously, in a big conference and get all the parties to be. I had a meeting with Senator Oberrocker on April fifth, which I will be, um, discussing with him, uh, holding a conference in regards to bringing all the resources together. I will make an announcement when that meeting is and we'll work together to fix the problem, but you're not focusing on business. You're not focusing on the future of what we need to do to include our families. There's no plans for families. The plan that you present is wonderful and I, I understand, but, okay, but you're the cheerleader here, Mark. You're the one that's, uh, cheerleading for RSS. That's not okay. That's a conflict of interest. It really is. If you take a look at it in our eyes, why is it you? Why isn't the council wishing their concerns? So we ask that the City of Oneonta, the citizens of Oneonta, ask the common council to stand up for our rights. Um, of their constituents and make a motion at some point, um, to understand that RSS, that is not the correct location in the City of Oneonta. We need properties on the tax bill. We need revenue. We need businesses to take that location on Market Street. You're, you're taking all the, the attention and put it onto Market Street. Who's paying attention to Main Street? That is falling apart. You're gonna have a beautiful creation of what's happening on Market Street and all of Center City. I mean, there's thousands of, I don't know, many, two hundred houses probably that are not painted, falling apart, people don't have money. What do we do with that? Well, I understand my time is up. I, I, please ask you to read this. I have, um, uh, data sheets that I'll be sending to the common council with, um, the regional food pantry and the minute notes from our illustrious leaders at the, um, Atsigo County Chamber, uh, excuse me, Atsigo County Board of Representatives, because they're not telling the truth. And I'm very surprised that they're not here. They never come out and speak in favor of this project here. They make
Thank you. Thank, thank you, thank you, Louisa. Have we, anybody else who would like to speak? Anybody else at all? Uh, yes, Mike.
Well, I lied. I don't really wanna speak and I feel held to.
Michael, you need to.
I'm sorry, my name's Michael Stolzer. I live at one forty four South, one forty two South, South Side Drive. Uh, I own, uh, a building at ninety seven Main Street. Uh, the old B F O U is, is kind of, you know, and, um, I have, uh, my, uh, student rental business uh, headquartered there as well as, uh, an art gallery that I had opened as a community service base. And I own all the, the properties in town. And I don't even know where to start because I'm you know, that anyone can forecast what's going to happen is absurd. As, as COVID certainly, uh, was a lesson we should have learned well before. So, um, I don't, I don't pretend to know what would happen if this project went through, uh, or if it didn't. And I, and I don't believe anything that anyone says who's promoting it either, because they don't have any view of the future. Uh, any better than I, what I, uh, what I'm, what what prompts me to get up and speak is when I think I'm so I'm being, someone's attempting to fool me. Um, I do think, I do think RSS is a I do think RSS is a, uh, a good, uh, a, a well-meeted service. I think it's the wrong location for it. I think it should be promoted elsewhere in the community. Um, I think you, uh, from the, the city has a due sharing responsibility to the taxpayers to make the optimum use of the taxpayer's resources, which that property is. And that is not it. What, uh, Danny said earlier about housing and economic development are two very separate things. Housing is not economic development. Housing, that's why major cities have departments of housing and departments of economic development, because they're separate. And that's not economic development. What we do need is a focus on jobs. If you wanna bring people here who will help improve the economy. Um, that being said, I have concern about the use of language and the salesmanship and the, you know, two very talented salespeople, one, uh, paid by RSS and one paid by us, Mark. Uh, using Madison Avenue hype, so to speak, uh, right, right-sized rents, uh, you know, instead of um, uh, calling it what it actually is, which is, uh, government-supported, um, low income housing. Uh, which is fine and we should have it, but not in a critically important, uh, I don't know what your fingers mean, Mark. I hope you're not being rude.
We're between the lines. You're acting through it.
I heard the next minute. You know, somebody gonna but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the, the selling of the project. And I'm, I have to say, I mean, you know, coming here from New York City twenty two, three years ago, um, you know, at the, my city boy, uh, sus- this just, I, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I smell BS. I do. And pushing this back, pushing this back doesn't say to me, you know, and I, I really do appreciate what you did say, Mark, about the, uh, you know, the community being, working together. But
Michael.
Like you've said.
We're, we're passed.
Okay, you've said that you don't think you have the votes and pushing it back, I, I'm hearing, I need more time to work. So I'm, I'm concerned.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you, Michael. Uh, have we anybody else who would like to speak? Yes. John.
Hello, I'm Tom Nocio. I'm John Havel. I live at twenty one, the twenty Garda Place apartment ninety one. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, this quote makes me think of the mayor's advocacy for unity. We need unity now more than ever in this day and age. Regrettably, Washington isn't providing that. I could say a lot more of them, but that's off topic. In the ten years I've been involved with local government, especially now in the City of Oneonta, Mayor Drinck is the first head of local government in my lifetime, was advocated for unity and to work together. When I first lived in the town of Maryland, that took our way from here in the first twenty six years of my lifetime with having to endure three supervisors, one of which is our current state senator. I had never heard out of the two town supervisors or even Senator Oberrocker, when he was my supervisor, we need unity. Mayor Drinck has done so and I highly thank him for doing so. Back when I was living in the town of Maryland, it was uncalled for. It was either us versus them, but never advocating for unity. And it just frustrates me that we can't have unity back in the city. I mean, during the time of nine eleven, when the first weeks, people were united. Didn't matter what their race was, didn't matter what their genders, sexual orientation, money, class, whatever. Were united. There was an interface service at Washington National Cathedral, my aunt and uncle attended. And everyone was brought together. That's the kind of unity we need and I highly thank Mayor Drinck for saying, we need unity. Oh, by the way, I would like to thank the common council in the past years for putting the budget online. Back when I was living in the town of Maryland, sorry for referencing that hometown. They regrettably said no. They didn't have the time nor the inclination to do so. Well, I regret to say, and I'm actually proud to say, that it sounded like a patent third army speech directly to the county. That was me giving the patent third army speech my way. Well, at least you guys don't have to hear me quoting the general at all, so thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Have we anybody else would like to speak? I believe we may have exhausted the petitioner section. That's nice and we'll move on to our correspondence. Now, Carrie is recovering from, um, pneumonia. So, uh, I'll beg the, um, indulgence of, um, the gallery, I'll read rather than Carrie reading. Um, we have this, what else do we have?
Uh, the petitions that were referenced by Elaine.
The petitions that were referenced, so that's already in correspondence. All right, so then the only, um, uh, article of correspondence is this. Uh, that's been provided by, um, Vicky Reese. Uh, dear Oneonta Common Council member, my name is Vicky Reese. I am the sole proprietor of Shakedown Street located at two forty eight Main Street in our beautiful city of Oneonta. Next year will mark my thirtieth anniversary and I'm excited to see what it is to come for our shopping district. The name Shakedown Street comes from a term used at festivals and gatherings for the vending area where crafters and artists sell their goods. It's also the name of fabulous Grateful Dead tune. It's a collection of, a collective of talent. The idea of the Oneonta Renaissance is the core goal of my business. It works. It's a draw for all ages. When Mayor Drinck first announced the idea of the street closure for the purpose of a Renaissance, I felt relief. Underlined, as a business owner in this struggling economy for the first time in a few years exclamation point. I use the word relief because we all know sales are down for a lot of us. Businesses are closing and community members are being extremely vocal about not feeling good energy on Main Street. The Renaissance will encompass positive energy, a place where families can walk around and talk to area craftsmen and musicians and have some free fun. Tourists will stay longer, shop up and down the strip in between musical acts and other events. Businesses on Main can stay open earlier, stay open later and have sidewalk sales and individual events and collaborate with one another and to support each other. As a result, we will thrive. My store offers an outlet to local artists and crafters of all ages. Currently, my database shows that we have two thousand, four hundred and fifteen active accounts, of which seventy percent reside in Atsigo and Delaware counties that sell their wares and goods on consignment at my store. We carry everything from handmade jewelry and reworked clothing to CDs and vinyl from local musicians. We recently had to downsize as we could not find a larger space that would work with our needs. By doing so, we no longer have a cafe in our shop. The cafe was home to a small stage where our talented youth could come and perform in front of small crowds to get exposure and experience. Young people in our community no longer have a place to do this freely and openly. The Renaissance will be the perfect, will be perfect for our community's upcoming musicians to have an outlet for their skills and to entertain throughout a summer day. The vibe that this will bring will spread throughout the entire downtown business district. I have already spoken to dozens of my vendors who are excited to have an opportunity to set up and sell their work to tourists and locals while surrounded by other talented community members, all sharing the same goal. It's a genius idea and I hope it comes to fruition as it is exactly what this community needs to bring energy and excitement to our shopping district. Once again, thank you for supporting this fabulous initiative and for making Oneonta a destination town once again and for your continued support of small businesses. Vote yes for the Oneonta Renaissance Initiative and block closure respectfully yours, Vicky Reese. And that concludes the correspondence, um, and, um, in terms of our boards, commissions and task courses. To, um, my knowledge, no liaison has come forward, uh, with, uh, a desire to speak and so we'll move to our committee reports. And, um, I will let people know, yes, Len.
Just one thing about the correspondence, I just wanna ask a question. We'll probably go to the city attorney. With regards to the petitions, I have concerns about the fact that we are putting in public record people's name, their signature and their place of address. And given that there's And given that there's probably not one person in this room that's not had a scam taken to them, I don't feel comfortable. I don't want to disregard it, I'm just wondering, can we at least white out the signatures are part of it? Because I'm very concerned.
You can't do that, because these are, these are public, these are people that signed it.
Hundreds of people that are.
So, so are the voting members.
You've got to go through the board of elections.
These are documents that suck oil.
We're putting this out on the internet.
I, I understand, they were submitted, they're submitted, they're part of the public record. They were signed by people voluntarily, we did data mine it. These are people who chose to sign.
I didn't say we data mined it, David, I'm just suggesting is that I want to safeguard these signatures along with their name and their addresses. A lot of them, I believe, are Harvard College students. And I don't want to see any young person or old person be subjected to that type of, type of scam. You're telling us there's no way that this municipality can safeguard their, their privacy?
It's not a safeguard. They, they chose to put their names, their signatures and their addresses on a petition and, and presented it as part of an intention to persuade the council based on their identification of where they live.
Yeah, I don't know if they knew that their signatures were going to go out and be subjected to the, to the public, to the internet.
We can't, we cannot censor documents that are presented to the common council. Can't do it.
I think we've exhausted that and thank you, Len. And we'll move on now to our committee reports, beginning with our Community Wellness Committee. And, and I'll just tell folks, we're, we're happy to have you here, we truly are. But if there are folks that feel like now, you know, you're interested in where we go is not such that you want to stay in your seats, we'll understand. So you're, some that might want to leave are excused and, and again, we appreciate your engagement. We'll give you a quick second so that we're not disrupting as you're trying to, trying to talk.
Sure, I was actually going to say, in case of time and that I didn't find my speakers, I would like to request that I can give a community wellness legislative meeting report next.
Next regularly scheduled meeting is April second, we'll do the community wellness report then, thank you very much, council member. And the same as the legislative, so we're going to defer for those keeping score. Well, the Community Wellness Committee and Legislative Committee reports to April second, which is our next actually regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday. And okay, it's good, if, if that winds up, I think we're fine. Quality of Life and Infrastructure Committee, Councilmember Harrington, can you provide a report?
Sure, we met on Monday at five o'clock. And we only had one item on the agenda, which was Fairview Street Handicap Parking Space. Kind of got a loud mouth, I can speak up.
No, it's, it's fine, it's, we're coming, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So we met, it was, this was the second time this was brought up to us for a handicap spot on the side of Fairview Street. And the committee, we discussed it, we discussed it with our city administrator and with Chris Hock, we chaired EPW director. About that, we're going to go ahead and make the motion, it's going to be come up at the next council meeting on the two eighty-three to change one of the spots to a handicap parking spot. Because it will help with the core, it will help with the businesses right there, it's going to help with, you know, people coming in and out. Even possibly residents that live over top of those, so it's, it's not a specific one for Ourkai Seagull, it's open to the public, but they have the need of trying to have a spot to have their residents be able to get to work. So like you said, it's open to the public and we're also going to put a two-hour limit on it. So that's to try to be fair, so it could be utilized the way it's supposed to. So I'll be coming at the next meeting, so it's going to be April seventh.
All right, any questions for Scott? All right, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Harrington. And we will now move on to the discussion agenda, which will begin with a conversation on the Deets Street Parking Lot Security Cameras, which I'm going to quickly take the lead on and then defer to Greg. So we've talked about making sure that the lots on Deets is safe, both inside and outside. And one of the things that we've come to realize is that there is, we don't quite have the level of connection to that which goes on in the parking lot. And I think it's important, I personally think it's important for the safety of the city and for the safety of the residents, that there is some sort of you know, useful connection to the police department. I see the chief in the back. And so it's, it's, I think it's, it's important personally that, that the Oneonta Police has eyes on anything that is inappropriate or threatening potentially either to the neighborhood or to the folks in the building. And so while we have that sort of security and we don't point out where it is, but we have that sort of security on Main Street, I think it's also, and we also have that security in other streets in our downtown. I think although we are not rich as a city, that this is an expenditure that makes sense and that will improve the quality of life for people both in the building and, and outside. So I'll let Greg talk a little bit about what might be involved in that.
Well, if that's something that the city council is interested in looking into, we would look into it. Essentially, I don't have a price to give you, I don't have the exact layout of where those cameras would go, but you know, you're covering a pretty big area in the Deets Street Park. Assuming you're talking about the entire parking lot, it's going to be, you know, a number of cameras. Can't say how many until we reach out and get a quote, so really it's, I, I think, I thought we were looking for the council's feedback on whether this is something we're interested in.
Yeah, no, no, we are, that's, that's what we are. So, so we're looking, we don't have a number, I guess, just to bring everybody completely up to speed, go ahead.
I think in fairness, as we were discussing roles of committees and stuff, something like this should go to the Quality Life Committee before it comes to the council first, so we can vet it, we can sit there, we can say how much, how far we want to go, how long we want to take.
Sounds good.
That's more information. You know, I think that's, that's the role of the committees, that's what we're supposed to do, so we get that information all up here so we all have it in one shot. I think we're starting to do things backwards by bringing things here first and then assigning them back to a committee.
So I, so Scott's point is well taken, this could be potentially an agenda item for your next meeting.
Yeah.
Is everybody consensus would be that's
where we'd go with it, yeah. Terrific. This comes, Scott, just to be, you know, to be clear, this comes of that larger conversation we've been having around the Deets lots and, and the issues that they've had. And so it's been more county council and mayor oriented. But I one hundred percent concur, it, it makes sense for it to run through the appropriate council committee and that's yours. So we'll put that on the next agenda.
When it comes to the committee, will they have like the costs and how many cameras and will it be recording or live, that kind of thing?
Well, that's where you're going to, that's where we're going to ask. The committee will be asking how far we want to go, you know, how many, you know, exactly what their, what the plan is, what the police department's looking for, what our city administrator might be looking for, what GPW might be looking for. You know, all this kind of works together, so I will be discussing with committees, so we know do we want to authorize how many cameras or are we going to try this as a trial, see if it's going to give us what we need to get or, you know, you know, something like that.
The committee could make recommendations as to what requirements.
Yeah, because they may say, well, we want six cameras, and the committee might say, no, because we understand the police department shortages that we got. We want ten cameras, we know that they only going to deal with six, we want to give them more. Or it could be the other way, you know, we're going four to six, but we're going to make direct decisions.
Further, yes.
I actually have a couple of things that I think could be answered today. I agree with you, I think the deep dive should definitely happen in committee. My question is, you know, this is something, are you expecting it to tap into the existing system? And if so, could you give a rough estimate of how much one of those cameras costs? Any other grounds question about it being live or reported? I'll start there.
So again, we would, we would contact our consultant that has installed the cameras on Main Street and other where, other places downtown to get, have a, take a look at it, see what it would take to be able to communicate back to the police department and have the interconnection. So I can't say that, you know, the cost per camera is X wires. Because it will really depend on how we're going to be connecting to the rest of the system.
Right.
It won't be a hard-wired connection, likely would be something that's
Are the ones.
But in order to get line of sight and figure out the technical, how it work is going to take some effort.
I understand.
So I can't really guestimate right now, I mean, if I was to guess.
I'm asking you to tell us how expensive the cameras are that already exist on Main Street.
Cameras that exist on Main Street, off the top of my head, I think we installed for somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars. Those are Main Street, parking garage, arcade walkway, I'm forgetting exactly how many there are, but I think I can go and check that number.
A two-camera, three-camera, some one-camera.
Okay, so, okay, so literally three cameras, not one camera that we're looking at costs.
It, it may have been less than that, let me find that. Then send it back to the local council.
All right, I appreciate that.
Anything particular?
I did have a second question, but I forgot.
Okay, so, I guess.
So Greg, we had security cameras that were installed in parking garage, are we repurposing them to the parking lot now? Yeah. Yeah, there'll be additional cameras that surround the transo plaza as well as parking lot, Water Street. And in the interim, are we doing that with, are we doing the same thing with all of the parking lots that we own? Meaning West Scott, now Twenty-Seven Market? No, there are no plans to, to install additional cameras that don't exist already, so the Wall Street lot, West Scott lot, Twenty-Seven Market. Have we ever had any? Have we had recent incidences at West Scott lot? I would have to refer to the police department, you put focus on data, see if there's anything there, I'm not aware of. I'm just trying to understand the need for this particular location though.
Well, I might be able to speak to that. So this, this location is, this is essentially, we created a, a large, but nonetheless alley sort of at the D Street lots between lots and Keno. And over the course of the last several months, although it's clearly gotten better, there was a lot of activity that was either threatening or inappropriate or dangerous or worse that, that was happening there. And so, you know, see, this is that, that thing that we talked about in the Safe Homes Neighborhood case, but the, the crime prevention through environmental design. So when we create a, unknowingly, we create an area that's shadowed, then we're inviting folks who are comfortable operating in the shadows to do that. And then that puts the, the building at risk. And so this is a very specific instance, now this has certainly gotten better, there's no question about it, but I, I think having had the experience of it having not been good and and that the potential there is always going to be the fact that that could turn back into a more risky area for folks who both live in the building and are, are, you know, in the neighborhood. It makes sense for us to know what is happening there and, and who might be perpetrating, you know, something that, and I got the chief right back.
The construction of the building, unlike any of the other parking spaces that we've got in the city, obstructs the vision for us to just drive past it and be able to observe a lot. The way that it's constructed, there's no secure access to the parking lot, it's the city parking lot. So you can make ingress and egress from adjoining parcels. Now, you know, community backs got cameras, they're a lot, but there's other areas there that it's just difficult for us to be able to see. I mean, we know, as, as we do have cameras in the downtown area, tie other cameras in that area. We've had stolen cars from the D Street parking lot. It is a dark and awkward area for us to keep an eye on, so the cameras, you know.
I don't want to take any time of the council's time, but I don't think the committee, like, kind of flushes out, this might be also an opportunity to create a public-private partnership with the building owner.
Potentially, so again, it'll go to the Quality Life and Infrastructure Agenda and I presume you'll hit that next month, your next meeting. So I appreciate the conversation on that, yes, Katie?
I remembered what my other thing was and I thought it was something else, and also it's part of what the chief said. I, I, I'm excited kind of about the way that this is going to work, because I think that it makes sense for most of the work to happen in the committee. But I think that this has been, me and I have most of the questions, so let me pat myself on the back. But I think it might be helpful for council to like bring up what our initial questions might be and then that work be kind of flushed out in the committee. That saves us a little bit of heartbreak on the way back, you know, when we go, oh, we didn't know that anyone's going to be concerned about that. And I am usually the only one concerned, so I'm seeing that as fair to you all, me doing that to you. But okay, so my, the question I forgot is, do we have any preliminary, preliminary idea of where this may come from in the budget? Because it's not something that we've budgeted for twenty-four. Are we, any idea where it might take it from?
General fund unrestricted fund balance would probably be the, the best bet unless there's significant savings elsewhere, we haven't looked at that yet.
So okay, of course, that was, that's something that would surface immediately, but that's just somewhere in my mind. And then the other thing is something that I was thinking and then the chief said, it's kind of a dark parking lot, do we know if there's going to be adequate lighting for the cameras to work properly? Or are we going to need to also invest in our lighting in order to facilitate this being a worthwhile purchase? I don't know if, you don't have to have the answer to that.
I have an answer, basically, it would all be part of the, the study that we would look at.
Okay.
Get our consultant involved, look at the layout.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I, I think we've reached the end of that discussion, thank you very much, council. And we'll move on to motion number two, that the common council approves the following resolution. Trial closure of the D Street, of D Street to through vehicles from Main Street to Wall Street. Whereas the city of Oneonta wishes to address the current decline in foot traffic and business support by implementing strategic initiatives to create a vibrant welcoming atmosphere. And whereas the city of Oneonta wishes to foster a sense of community ownership and pride by actively involving residents, students and businesses in the revitalization efforts. And whereas the city of Oneonta wishes to position downtown Oneonta as a destination for both locals and visitors, particularly families of players from the Cooperstown All-Star Village during the summer. Now therefore be resolved, the section of Deets from Main Street to Wall Street shall be closed to through vehicular traffic on a trial basis. Initially on Saturdays only, including April twenty-seventh, May fourth, May eleventh, May eighteen and May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. And be it further resolved, the section of these street from Main Street to Wall Street shall be closed to through vehicular traffic on an extended trial basis seven days a week, beginning May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four through November fourth, twenty twenty-four. And be it further resolved, for the duration of the extended trial, temporary stop signs will be installed on Main Street at the intersection with D Street on both eastbound and westbound traffic to allow for safe, frequent pedestrian crossing. Do I have a motion to approve? Katie, followed by Cecilia. Can I jump in at the top of the discussion? So I spent the last two days over the course of approximately seven hours and I guess about eight miles of walking, so I'm I'm losing weight, yes, thank God, it's like, I know I've been walking, so I got my steps in. And I visited with twenty-five, twenty-six actually, different businesses downtown. And we don't have that many more than, than that, so I, I connected with that many. And I spent a minimum of fifteen minutes, sometimes longer, with each one of them explaining exactly what we were looking to do here. They fully and completely and totally understand. And of all those folks that I visited, and that, you know, if you do the math on it, it's like seven hours I've spent these last couple of days. So we have a, what amounts to a petition to council here from all of these folks. And it reads, and, and I had to make certain that they read through this as well, even as I explained it. I write, as a key component of the effort to increase foot traffic by ensuring that downtown Oneonta has daily appeal to families visiting the Cooperstown All-Star Village, from the Cooperstown All-Star Village, as well as to local residents, I support the closure of D Street from Main Street to Wall Street for a trial period of five months, beginning June first, in order to create Beginning June first, in order to create a daily marketplace. That includes vendors, artists, crafters, musicians and other performers. As part of this strategy, the Oneonta Farmers Market will move from its present location on Market Street to the closed section of D Street. Including Saturday mornings only, beginning April twenty seventh. And those that have signed this, I'm just gonna quickly roll through for you, Principally Prince, Champ's Barber Shop, Yellow Deli. Simply Time, Magic Box, Serenity Hobbies, United Food Mark. Um Red Jug Pub, Tiger Sushi, Ed Telekey Jewel, Roots Brewing Company, Maxwell's Mountain Jam Guitars, Tokyo Japanese Cuisine. Asian Cuisine of Oneonta, Shakedown Street, Wise Guys, Capresso, Nags Bar and Kitchen, Oculus Visant and Gallery, Oneonta Optical. Sal's New Classic Pizzeria, The Underground Attic, GOHS, Greater Oneonta Historical Society. And Excel, which is the um new SUNY um space on D Street. So we have twenty five people, uh and these are the representatives, the owners of the businesses, not staff. Uh who've signed off on this, and what I can tell you is that those people who've signed this are not. They're either supportive or they're really supportive, you know, and and the thank yous that um I received and and I share with you. Uh for the city being proactive in trying to address the issue of their foot traffic is something that um is um. It was often uh expressed to me and I shared with you, so that's mine. Now it's your discussion as to whether or not we do this, so I'll let I'll let the council go. Um yes, Doc.
I I live on uh D Street, one D Street, so it's would be blocking off the street, it'd be a minor inconvenience, but I think it's a good idea. And I'll vote for it.
Appreciate that, uh further, further, yes, Scott?
Yes, my question is, we're gonna be pushing traffic. I forgot the street, Wall Street.
Yes.
Out on Chestnut Street, which is during the day, Monday through Friday, it's gonna be impossible to make a left-hand turn coming out of there.
Greg, do you wanna, can you?
It's a right-hand turn.
Yeah, that's right, Greg, can you jump?
I'll do my right from my left, but we're gonna try, it's gonna be almost impossible, keep that amount of traffic going to the right, we're gonna, and they're gonna try to. Cut somewhere else to turn around and come back down, I I guess that's my concern, is the traffic flow on this seven days a week. I'm I'm for doing the weekends, I just don't know if I'm for Monday through Friday. So.
I think uh just to ultimately, we're gonna be monitoring traffic impacts at that intersection. I guess we'll see what happens, um I think people are going to adjust. Local people are gonna figure out what 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 the deal is, what where the shortcuts are, where they aren't. Um I think that happens over time, I think the idea of having a trial period is is just for that reason, you're not making any major permanent changes. Um it's something that's easily reverted if if there are major impacts that can't be overcome. Uh but I think it's something that you can only find out what what it's going to be like by trying that.
Uh OBT buses are already having a hard enough time through there, that's why we took out coming. Two parking spots there, you come up, it's already condensed down, now you're gonna ask more traffic to come up. And I don't really, didn't really like part of your answer, where you say, I guess we're just gonna see what happens, that's really not a good answer.
I can't predict.
I understand that, that's still not, if we're going to do something like this, we should have already been doing this. Studies of watching traffic coming out, how much we're gonna be diverting. And like that, and we didn't do that, so I mean, this is just my concern, and I just, I don't. I just think the answer lacked a little bit.
I I can't, I can, I can expound on that answer, if you'd like, I can't look at the turning movements at D Street. And the wall and Deets in Maine and Deets or wall in Chestnut. And assume that everyone that's currently going right onto Deets from Maine, left on the wall, right, you know. I can't assume that that traffic, what they're going to do when that's taken away, so I think the only way to really get accurate data as to what's going to happen is to give it a trial run. Um I have thought about this, but I don't think that it's worth sitting out and watching the traffic now. Um I think the trial is is the way to go, as far as the OBT bus issue, that's with parked cars and there being restriction. Uh on Chestnut Street, that's why those few, first few parked cars were removed. To further alleviate that issue would be, the best solution would be to remove the remaining parking spaces on the on Chestnut Street. Um I know that was a a discussion back when that was originally done, there was a kind of a compromise, let's keep some parking and. Um try to help the buses out, but I don't think the turning movements themselves are gonna restrict the buses. But I do think that it's important that we track, track the data and see what what the impacts are and report back on that and adjust as needed.
Right, can I jump in for a quick?
So what are you gonna do if there's a bigger truck coming down through? Coming down D Street and all of a sudden, hey, now they realize it's blocked, and they have to go, because they're not gonna be able to back up. Because we don't really have the drive in D Street anymore the way they used to be. And they're not gonna be able to make the swing on the wall and come around and make the swing back on the Chestnut Street. When I say a bigger truck, I mean, I'm saying delivery trucks come down through there.
System.
So, yes, so I don't see. Again, I I'm all for trying it on the weekends, I just don't think Monday through Fridays is a good. Way of trying to do this without having and monitoring itself before you, but that's, and I'm not gonna keep on, but that's just.
Alright, so I so I do wanna jump in here quickly, um so we're marketing to the Cooperstown All-Star Village and and of course to our locals, right? Um this is. The the Cooperstown All-Star Village is working on six day week. So they may come in on Saturday, in which case they're they're dropping their bags and they're getting themselves acclimated and they're going to the 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 park and and. You know, learning about what's what, and then they go home and that's it, right, so that's that first day. Or it could be that because it's every six days and, you know, so the entry day is a Sunday, now the next week it's a, it's a Saturday, the next week it's a. So it could be that they're leaving on that day, it could be that they're arriving on that day, it could be, if we're talking about the weekends. It could be that they're also going to Cooperstown that day, because it's typically the second day that they arrive. So what we're looking at is they've got a three, they got a six-day period of time that they're with us, because it's a six-day week. And potentially, three of those days are either arriving, leaving, or heading to Cooperstown, so we now only have them for three days. Depending on what that cycle is, the weekend may simply not be enough for them, and the thing about. The this whole effort is about foot traffic throughout the week, so you guys remember um. Forgive me for this, but it's not that long ago, you remember the Survive and Thrive stuff? Right, uh all the tables and chairs and Betsy's wincing there because she helped me with so much of that. But the tables, the chairs, umbrellas and three stages and and all the stuff that we had going on, it was like, that was crazy. That was like, if we did a study, we would say, don't do that, because that would have been just crazy. But we needed to, because it kept the businesses that were absolutely at risk in business. We were able to do things uh throughout that first summer and into that second. That absolutely made a difference to businesses' survival and 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 I'm looking at essentially a COVID-level issue that we have right now. But let me just please finish, so if you look right now at what we are uh experiencing downtown. We have um a number of people who live in our community who are not comfortable being downtown. That's just a fact, they're scared, they don't feel safe, they don't, there's a million different reasons that that they don't feel like they wanna be downtown. We have to change that narrative, and then we absolutely need to bring people in. We cannot, uh you know, who are visitors, we cannot have uh a Wednesday at one, I was talking to Freddie Rivera over at Nina's. We'd look down the block, it was a quarter to one on a Wednesday. It was a beautiful day, it's one of those kind of like seventy degrees one day, it's ten degrees the next day, it's one of those seventy-degree days. We're looking down the block and we could count at a quarter to one, how many people were on the street, we can't expect our businesses to survive unless we put feet. On the street, this is kind of a, the same as what we did with Survive and Thrive, it did, it wouldn't make sense if it was just, you know, now. That we would say, let's do that, but that was what we needed to do then, and I think this is, this is like all hands on deck. We have to make sure that our businesses survive, these people who signed this, this is what I told them, this is why they said, please. Go ahead, Katie.
I noticed that Nina's was not on that petition.
Who's?
Nina's?
Now they're close.
Okay.
I only have one person turn me down.
Okay. Um I also, just on that note, um I drive that route all the time. To go, I live on Center Street, I drive down D Street to go to the kind of south of town. Um. I share the same concern as Scott, which is that if I am driving down D Street. I have to take a right onto the wall, which is dicey kind of anyway, in terms of return. And then, so there's gonna be more travel there, but then also I physically cannot take a left, if I'm a tourist, I cannot take a left. Uh taking a right even is a little scary with the parking spaces there, so I would be totally in favor of them, maybe those, um just anyways, general aside, but um. Uh that might not be popular, but um but the visibility there is really poor, so anyway. Right now I'm taking, I can't take a left to go back toward Main Street, which is where I was intending to go, I have to go up Chestnut Street and I'm. Wouldn't you know it, I'm on my way back to the Cooperstown All-Star Village, so I'm not going downtown today. Um I will say, I did have someone before the meeting, and I I'm sad to see that she left, we had a great conversation. Um and her idea was to uh anticipate where the bulk of the traffic from. Coming down D Street in that direction might be coming from, and her uh assumption was that was Center Street, which tracks for me. Um and just putting some signs um at the corner of Center and Deets, and then also just some wayfinding that says you can't get to Main Street. Um I liked that idea, and uh I wanted to bring that up, the other thing is, and this is kind of counter to what. Um Scott is saying is that I think that the more, and I'm going to ask uh that we remove. The trial closure closure and either, not, I'm sorry, not the trial closure, but the Saturday-only part of the trial. And just either do it or go, because I think that people are going to say, I don't ever know when that's closed, just close it. And then it's done, um and people will, but instead of. People, people need, are going to need time to get used to it while it's uncomfortable, if we can go forward with this, and so let's just rip that Band-Aid off. Um in my opinion, we either do it April twenty seventh, we go from there, or we wait until. May thirtieth, we go from there, because I think that if we alternate, it's going to be very confusing. Um and the other suggestion that was made goes along with that, which is that we need to make sure that people knows. That that section of the street was closed, so that people could put their destination, their phone, or led there properly. Um but I agree, I mean, I think that, not even a study, but an analysis of where, what. What is allowed where and how, not even the volume, just like how the traffic might flow, might have been prudent prior to asking us to make this decision. Um delivery trucks uh are scary, I've started to say that before, um and. Um I also didn't notice the latte lounge on there, I don't know that you asked them and they said.
I didn't know, they, I already know they said no, uh they were originally receptive and right now, uh that there's other things I think that are kind of. You know, influencing people's opinions.
I mean, but I, they are one that like gets deliveries there, so again, that corner being weird. And then also delivery trucks kind of clogging that up, I can see that kind of being, I know, so those are just things that I think about. In general, I think it's a really nice place-making idea, and I'm in favor of it, but I wanna make sure. I'm comforted by the fact that it's on trial basis, um but I wanna make sure that we are like addressing what we can control ahead of time, so.
The um before I go to you, just to address the the issue um of uh ripping the Band-Aid off, please.
Okay, sure.
Um so the farmer's market uh is like a key piece. Here, we really want the farmer's market um to be, you know, back in the, you know, the Main Street connective area, right? Um so they are happy, um if we approve this to to begin on April twenty seventh. Um bringing the farmer's market and kind of working out the bugs on that uh in the process, um.
I would like to, I would like to change this in a friendly way to say, to remove this.
Right, but I I'm. Sure, I'm addressing why that uh that I think that that might not be a great idea, just if you hear me out on it. Um so we have not yet put an RFP out for a coordinator, so I'm kind of doing that job right now, I I mean, we will as soon as we possibly can, and I'm presuming. That'll be pretty soon, but right now, um it's it's me, and the the good news is that it's not like I ain't done this before, right? So, you know, I mean, we know that I have some history of success with this stuff, so. I'm not gonna be, I, to be honest, come June one, we can, we can fill this thing and it's gonna be rocking, you know, but come April twenty eighth. I can't say that that's gonna be the case, and so people are gonna get upset over the fact that the street's closing, it's nothing going on there. Um for essentially five weeks, so I think that that winds up being kind of counterintuitive. To the public buy-in that's gonna be so necessary to that street being closed, so that's the reason that I would say not, but go ahead, Katie.
I think we could, I don't know, make the street look different there somehow, paint it, ma- make it look like it's on purpose, and then there's nothing happening there, because. Genuinely, I think the confusion that is caused by whether the street is open or not for a little while, and when does that full-time border start and? I just think it would be much simpler if we just.
Wanna go to Cecilia before I go back to you, Lynn?
Just very quickly, I'll take my comment, I just have one, really one, one and a half comments, which is that um I'm concerned. Uh in terms of the streetscape, I I'm very concerned about the blind curb that's on Wall Street, that I just drove the other day and that I've. Done for years, and with increased traffic, the blind curb would make drivers, I think, apprehensive, so I'm concerned about that. And just in terms of the the spatial configuration there, um it's not optimal for any of this type. So there's that that issue, I actually um find that um a little bit counter to. Um Katie's suggestion about the Saturday closure being next, I actually think a Saturday closure may allow us to see how people do. Just as, just as like, sort of an initial um trial, a trial of a trial. So that's my, those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Cecilia.
I'm on his hands, no, I was.
Uh that's me off guard, sorry. No, I I agree with you, and I understand Katie's exactly. I think that the trial basis would be good, if we see problems coming up, I mean, council always the right, always reserves the right to say this isn't working.
Right. It's in fact one of the things that I told every single person, that look, and and they all know me, I mean, you you know, uh make, nice to know that they trust me too. I told, if this isn't working, we'll introduce a motion and we will shut the thing down, go ahead, Katie.
Can I make a comment, which is that we do a trial from April twenty seventh to May thirtieth. Rather than every Saturday, see how it goes for a month and then potentially extend it through the summer.
Yeah, just make a quick suggestion.
You can start it off.
I know Lynn has something, the COVID controls are very terrible. I don't know if I can call him.
Yeah, yes, of course, come.
So Katie mentioned Google Maps, so I won't have to do that one again, um but I would like to start off with something that Scott alluded to is. This really seems like an item that should have went before Click. It got flushed out through that committee structure, and I'm trying to understand why we're bringing this initiative to full council and resolution rather than. All of this dialogue could have been done at a committee level, and so again, I would hope that Click might be able to pick this kind of stuff up. I'm with Cecilia on this, um I'm concerned that we're specifically, language is in the motion. That we're going after a entity's clientele. We haven't done any study on the traffic down there with regards to this specific client. Or entity, sorry. And given what everybody else in council is saying about concerns about traffic safety. We haven't heard from the fire chief about access to one eighty-nine, which is a very large building. Um I spoke with the property manager of one eighty-nine, who was in. Contact with the property owners, and unfortunately, they were not approached by the mayor on this, they have concerns on how their building. Is gonna be approached for any emergency activity and or just deliveries, they do have deliveries and they're concerned about that. Activity, as for the owners that are across the alleyway from them, I did speak to the owner of that building. Who also own Latte Lounge, and they're very concerned about deliveries, knowing for the one business, but now for their um their other building. Um I did speak to. One, the owner of Telekey, and Bonnie did say that Mark was there today or yesterday, and that she was in favor of it. I didn't remember that we were actually gonna suggest beyond the Saturdays, closing it down seven days a week, and so um. Not only I hear what you're saying about rip the Band-Aid off, I'm kind of there, but I also just know that I think there's some. Serious traffic concerns that um they're gonna be running into, and I I can see the Saturdays. But given our experience through COVID and shutting down all of Main Street and hearing back, I think Marky ran around and did a survey for that.
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe that, you can't please everybody, but I don't think a majority were, were in favor of closing all of Main Street.
Oh, Main Street, that's exactly right.
So, um, given that experience, I would like to, I'd like to see us do the Saturdays, see how that goes. But, um, I, I don't feel comfortable in the second section of the program.
So I, I would, alright, thank you. I, I would say that you also should know that there are a lot of, um, there are a lot of things that are contingent upon what the council does here tonight. So conversations that we've had with, uh, Destination Marketing, uh, which is Atsico County Tourism relative to how and with, uh, the Cooperstown All-Star Village relative to what is gonna go up on their websites, uh, promoting Onianta generally. Again, the fact of our not being able to promote a Saturday, um, for the restrictions of a six day week. Uh, I, I think hopefully I've made that clear, I'll have to go back about that, but there, there are also, um, there's a potential connection to, um, the which Destination Marketing has promised to help with, uh, to some of the Cooperstown memorabilia, um, shops where we might be able to engage one or two of them to, to be vendors on Diet Street. Where we would then be able to have for those visitors to the Cooperstown All-Star Village a connection to the rationale for their being here prior to their getting to Cooperstown, which would be huge for them and a sales point for the Cooperstown All-Star Village. Uh, we also are going to be negotiating, having conversations around, um, we, we talked about it last year, but there wasn't anything for them to do here and that was a big deal that they uh, made clear to us. But we would like to con- continue a conversation around a bus and shuttle, which then eliminates some of the headaches around, um, you know, tr- actual traffic on the street. Now you're talking about bringing people in for something that is a draw. And that's one, that's really what this is all about. It's about giving ourselves something that is a draw. Go ahead.
So, all I can think of is when I was growing up, Ronald Reagan saying, here we go again. And I'm gonna say this, here we go again, where you're having talks and you're promoting things. You get the councils, the, we're, we're the tail of the dog, we're bringing up the rear and getting told about it. We should be told about it upfront, that this is what you wanna do to make sure that we're behind you before you go have all this stuff, because now I feel like you're trying to put me back into a corner saying, if you don't agree with me, we're not, we're not gonna go to this, 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 this. And I'm just gonna blame you guys, cause you're not doing this, because you sat right there and said uh, up there at the podium, I hope they pass this, but it's in the council's hands to discuss this. And as the council's trying to discuss this, you keep buttoning in and saying, but this is what I wanna do, this is this, this is this. And this is the frustration the council is having right now.
Sure.
And this is some of the frustration I think that has actually boiled off into the public. When everything else going on is because we're finding things out at the same time that they're doing it and we're not being brought in at the beginning of things. And I believe at the beginning of your term, Mark, when you were sitting there, I sat there because I said, talked about your Daily Star articles, when you're putting stuff in the editorial, we're finding out about it right before we come to a council meeting. And I'm, I feel, again, I feel disrespected that that's going on. We're all here to do the same job, we're all here to push the city forward, but we can't do it if we don't have any sense of unity. It needs to be one, one city going forward.
Appreciate that, um, I, I think everybody will remember, uh, receiving from me an entire plan sometime in late January. Um, that included all of this information and beyond that, you know that I put together a PowerPoint for that very long meeting that we, uh, we, we looked at, but we, it was gonna be a discussion item, we were gonna go point by point. On February sixth, I did ask council that you wanna go through it and, and we didn't, but I, I know everybody, in fact, because I've had multiple conversations with folks, I've reintroduced the package to people so that they had the opportunity. And we've had the opportunity to have the conversation for now pushing three months. Um, so it's, it's, it's not really been particularly clandestine. Yes, Katie?
That's true, but we haven't talked about it, like, I don't, we haven't been in the knowledge. So I think we could do that right now. I know I have some questions about the downtown Renaissance. Um, things that I would like to understand better and, and I don't know, I mean, maybe we can do it right now, cause I don't have my packet in front of me. Um, but I think that, you know, at our next meeting, at least that would be.
Sure.
I, I would, I would, uh, agree, but I think we do need to have a council conversation down there. But that's really that whole in the conversation overall of that.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. And again, February sixth, there I was with it, so we'll just come back to it. We've had a few things, kind of, you know, sidetrack us, uh, but yes, absolutely, um, because this is, Scott, um, this quite honestly is, and I'm sorry that, um, there are some things that you know, as preliminary in order, because it's a timeline, um, and, and it's actually a timeline that's, um, that is not particularly adjustable. The, the June first is the first date of the Cooperstown All-Star Village coming in. So there are things that need to get, um, conversations that need to happen in, in February. Um, conversations that have had to happen in March. In order for things to actually be in place by the time we are looking at, um, this, this, um, potential tourist and, and, and locals draw to our downtown. So those conversations did have to happen within the timeline. Uh, I don't know outside of the conversations that I've had with most every council member where I've laid this out, uh, kind of multiple times, uh, what it is that we're doing and provided the information in those, in those sessions. And again, you know, my attempt on February sixth was documented, we, you know, we did, that was a discussion item and we got derailed on it. So it's not really like I've been, you know, trying to keep this from people, but there are timelines that if I don't i- in, in kind of my role, before we pull a coordinator into this, I have to kind of get with Hartwood College, I have to get with SUNY. I have to get with A O Fox and, and Bassett Healthcare and have to, to, to connect with Destination Marketing and, and Atsico County Tourism. And kind of get, you know, at, at Cooperstown and All-Star Village, I kind of have to get the places, the pieces in place. Cause if they're not in place, then we have a discussion and we're all more inclined to be supportive of this, I'm sure, on the other side of discussion. But then we wind up, uh, unable to actually pull the trigger to make this happen. And the merchants really need this, and so that's why I've been doing the work.
Mark, you go back to, you haven't even asked us, we're on board with your Renaissance program. You haven't come to this council and said, are you on board with this? We came into a board meeting and not our new members, but the old board, finding out that funding was taken away from VO.
Mm-hmm.
That you're doing this shift. And then you were working with Greg to do this shift. And we're sitting there going, when did this come up? Again, wow. You can sit there and, and say, and I, I'm glad that you're going out on your pitch. I think your heart's in the right spot, I truly do. And I, I don't want anybody to take away that I'm beating you up, I'm not. I'm just saying, I think we need to get better as a whole, trying to come up maybe the top two or three plans we wanna see succeed and get them pushed through and not have, okay, you're talking to this one, you're talking to this one, you're talking to this one. I think I sent this out, well, this guy sent out. But the council hasn't had the conversation. You know, the conversation has to be with the council. What, what do we wanna do? We're the ones that are driving the city. And we wanna work with you.
Hmm.
But we need to have that, you know, I wanna do this Renaissance program, this is what we need to do. And I'm sorry, one-on-ones is not the place to do it. Because I, I, I think it needs to be done out here, because I'm very, I wanna be very transparent in my last three years, sitting in the seat of what we're trying to accomplish for the city.
Right, and just to reiterate, it was a council agenda item on February sixth. Uh, everybody had the material in their hands weeks before. I put together a PowerPoint specifically for council, we wound up with a very long meeting and we basically went through the PowerPoint and that was going to be a topic of discussion. I had told council, in fact, I think in emails, that we wanted to have a point-by-point discussion of every single item, that was the agenda. And that didn't, that didn't happen, but it was February sixth, so that's quite a while ago. And again, it's, folks have had material prior to that. And you're a hundred percent right about one-on-one meetings not being the place to have the conversation initially. But it is a good place for me to be reconnecting with folks on what it is that we're doing, so that they have the ability to say to me at any given time that I have an issue with this or I have a better idea about that, that's the reason we were doing it. Lynn?
So before at least, Cody? Right, Cody?
Kobe?
Kobe, sorry. Thank you very much for publicly speaking. I know that that's difficult and it took a lot of strength to get up there and do that, but very cool experience. Alright.
And I know that wood seat is hard, so I don't blame it for that.
Also, you live in my work, so if you need anything, I'm your council representative. Alright, cool. Nice to meet you.
So, I agree with Scott, your heart is in the right place, but these ideas gotta come to the council first and have a conversation with the council. You literally have gone and done all this work. I'm gonna assume then that this street closure was part of your Renaissance.
Yep, yes, it's in the patch.
So then tell me why you're working on this Renaissance for multiple months and you just got done telling us that you ran around two days before today to find out if the property owners were going to be directly affected by this.
Okay.
So that's my point, Mark, is that the council is still gonna make the final decision.
Hmm.
Why are you killing yourself doing this stuff when it's the council that makes the decisions?
If I might, so as I understood at the last council meeting, uh, there was, which I wasn't in attendance, it was, I was, I was gone. Uh, other things, but, uh, that there was a, this got tabled, because there was a question as to whether or not the community was supportive of it. Uh, and, uh, and am I right? Yeah, but what I heard was that, this is the thing that I heard, was that the community wasn't supportive of it.
Right.
Yeah, and so, right, so I, 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 I made an effort and, and you know, um, you may all probably, you know, assume that I've been really busy, right? But, and, and I also haven't been here, right? So it's my opportunity these last two days to be connecting with businesses and actually get something that you know, put in front of them exactly what it is that we're looking to do, exactly what it was and spent that fifty to twenty minutes with them. So they were absolutely clear about it and get their reactions, which as I said, ranged from supportive to really supportive. There's, there was no in-between, there was nobody that was wishy-washy about it. Do people have concerns about how my, like, um, tiger age, uh, tiger, tiger Asian? Um, they want to be able to ensure that they are, it just changed the name of their place, I'm just trying to. Yeah, it's Tiger Sushi, um, that they wanna be able to make sure they can take their garbage to the, uh, alley behind one eighty-nine. So we have to figure out how we can make that happen. The Latte Lounge, same story, anybody who's taken, getting delivers. In real time, we figure the stuff out that needs to get figured out, but in ri- in this moment, in this moment, I know, I mean, I, I know these people, as you, as you all, many of you know. I've spent a lot of time, you know, walking the streets of downtown and connecting with merchants. I know these folks, they, they know me and they I'm happy to say they trust me. They are really passionate about needing to have their businesses survive this summer and, and, and a, a weekend isn't gonna do it for them. They need something daily that is gonna be something we can draw people into. So we can take a look at, you know, all of the various aspects of this in terms of, you know, left-hand turns, right-hand turns. I have a lot of confidence in our city staff to be able to make some determinations that they can bring to council, bring to Click, whatever it may be. Uh, about, you know, modifications to wayfinding signage and all the rest, all of those things we can figure out. But the big issue is if our community needs something and it is clear that they need something. They need foot traffic, they need the ability to be able to sustain their businesses this summer. More than just sustain, they need to be able to really thrive this summer. And this is a way for us to do that. Now, I'm sorry, I mean, I gave everybody information and I did, you know, I did intend to have a robust conversation to get sidelined, February sixth. Um, and I continue to connect with people individually, ensuring that everybody's aware of what we're trying to do. Outside of that, I appreciate it, as much as we could have the council generate everything, kinda I'd like to have that be the case, but you do, you did, folks did elect me to provide leadership. And this is the leadership that I see in this moment, that our community really needs our help. Who, what, so Katie?
Um, I, yeah, I, you're super passionate about it and I really appreciate that. I know that you're very like driven to this thing. And I am just a very like logistical person, so you know, Lynn, you mentioning one eighty-nine Main Street, like where are they part of our hookups? Having an understanding of how, like, real practical things to the physical environment that, you know, these, this is gonna be a big change and knowing things like that, I think is only it, it's not, like, for me, it's not like that I wanna slow the process down or I don't believe in the idea.
Yeah.
And I do, I think that having like practical knowledge of the impact that this is gonna have on the community with regard to safety, with regard to traffic, like, those things are important and it's our responsibility as representatives to know those things to the extent possible before just being like, it's a good idea, we'll see how it goes. That's just not how I work. Um, maybe my husband would disagree, cause he's even more measured than I am, so he's gonna be really proud of me, but I think that, um, I think, yeah, I think that we just should know those things. I mean, the fire department hooked up when you said that, I was like, I think it's in the back of the building. So it would be helpful to know that kind of stuff and I know that staff time is limited, so writing up, you know, schematics for us to review of all the impacts is probably not possible, but I think just thinking about those things ahead of time and having answers to, as we address concerns would be helpful.
Yes.
So, uh, just to be to your concerns, my understanding was that the proposal included this coordinator, part-time coordinator position.
Yes.
And that the coordinator position would be responsible for answering a lot of those questions. Uh, so I'm curious as to where that process is in terms of hiring the coordinator.
The R.
Something we were working on as a council, or is it something now that will be positioned hired through the city itself?
I'll talk to that quick. My understanding of what the next steps should be, um, because we talked about having it being a contracted position, would be to have an RFP developed. Uh, I think we had, it's a full email exchange where we talked about having that RFP brought before council, before sending it out. Then getting responses, then through the RFP process, selecting somebody, bringing them to the council to hire. Uh, that would be the process. Unfortunately, we just haven't written the RFP yet. I don't think it's gonna take a ton of work, but there's twenty-four hours a day. Um, so it really is taking, you know, the, the proposal that the mayor drafted with the job description, essentially, if it needs putting that into an RFP format, coming with sporting rubric, and then we can get it out with them. But we wanted to share that with the council first.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that.
I think that's a great question, cause I was sitting there too. What about the coordinator? Mark had mentioned that they had a little discussion, so.
Scott?
I just, I, this is my, I'm just maybe naive, I'm just trying to figure it out, cause you keep saying foot traffic down on Main Street, which I, I'm a hundred percent I know we gotta get down here. My question though is, you close off that section of Diet Street. You use farmer's market on Sunday, or Saturday, I'm sure. I envision them either parking at the wall, Wall Street Lot, Diet Street Lot, walking down, buying what they want, walking back. I also envision performers and stuff, they're gonna park at Wall Street, park at Diet Street, they're gonna say, hey, this is great. Maybe some will funnel in, I think the majority is gonna turn back around and go back to their cars. I'm not envisioning how, this might be naive of me, cause I, I, I don't understand the whole half means a downfall.
Sure.
But I don't understand how they're gonna, you're going to get them from that little piece with that half corner down onto Main Street to, to u- utilize our businesses.
It's a great question.
So I guess that's probably the question I should have.
No, it's a good, it's a, it's a very good question. Big, uh, uh, here's the, the great thing about Onianta. We are totally, you know, I mean, seriously, so, so we have something going on, on Diet Street. You can just about toss something and, 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 you know, hit Mallor Plaza. You know, it's right there, right? So, so Mallor Plaza is where, you know, we are intending again to have now our chairs, our tables, or, you know, a little bit of really cool stuff that Kevin's bringing to it this year again. So there's gonna be an activity area there as well. It, it was good last year, it'll be better this year, which is exciting to me. So we have that, you know, kind of visual, almost visceral kind of connection across the street. But beyond that, we're also looking at bringing as many artists, performers, uh, and, 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 you know, folks both, um, visual and musical to be, you know, connecting to every potential opportunity in Onianta through this, through the summer. This is the thing I've been talking about. in Oneonta through this, through the summer. This is the thing I've been talking about, we really need to kind of embrace the visual and the performing arts and say, have at it, guys, have at it. Uh, and, and with that winds up, and then we're looking at taking store windows, starting something that we have started uh, with, uh, the Clinton Plaza and, um, the mural artist who had done the first people's mural. She, along with Ian, um, Austin and, and several others, about a dozen years ago, had done the three-dimensional window, um, you might recall those, they were wonderful and they were eye-catching and they brought people down. So we are already starting that process in the Clinton Plaza, I mentioned in my presentation, we need to bring the Clinton Plaza into, and we're gonna I'm sorry, uh, this, this, uh, well, the city is generally.
Just, just the city?
Well, I mean, no.
So the city staff and you?
No, 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 it's no city staff.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just, so it's volunteers, basically, volunteers. So, so, yeah, so there's a, you know, so, so what we wanna do, and yes, I'm, you know, very embedded in the volunteer thing, obviously. Um, but what we wanna do is we want to, we wanna take every empty and dark space and turn it into something, you know, just in terms of the windows, for instance, where you've got, you know, a two-dimensional, three-dimensional kind of a, a, a bit of artwork that also has the floor plan of the space that's available and has a QR or whatever contact information so that people who are interested in the space potentially, you know, might be able to make that connection, but we will have every, every opportunity for art we need to kind of explode into. Uh, everything that we can do that takes something that's boring and making it interesting, we need to do, we do that. And that's gonna create this experiential city that we are really desperately in need of. Um, we're, because again, as we've talked about, we cannot compete with Southside and, and we could, we cannot compete. Uh, and Southside, you know, just generally speaking, can't, you know, really compete with, you know, Amazon and the rest of, so we're all in this place where we have to know where we are in the continuum and where we are is we survive and we ex- excel if we embrace the performing and visual arts and become an experiential, you know, uh, location. And that is that's not, that's not subject to the confines of a, a closed Deep Street, that winds up being connective in, you know, what does your eye go to? And so I, I have zero doubt that we'll wind up with a lot of foot traffic because of that. And we wanna also, I'll go right to you, Len, we also wanna have our merchants who are now invested in this, as, as you know, engaged in the promotion so that there are things that are happening, we talked about this with the engagement committee once upon a time. Things that are happening that will bring people back and forth, up and down Main Street, you know, whatever those things might be, let's say.
Greg, how much is it gonna cost us as we close down this section, the city staff for those five dates? And then part B to that question is, you've already guaranteed certain organizations closure of Main Street. Do these dates line up with their dates?
Do you mean, so for the second question, uh, existing events like parades, that sort of thing, closure events, right?
Yeah, like the basketball tournament, and there was some other events that we had agreed as a council that dip the prize parade, some other, I just wanna make sure all these gates are jiving and we're not.
So for all of the Main Street closures, that little section of Deep Street is also closed at Wall Street, uh, so it, it doesn't interfere with those closures, it's just part of it. So I don't, I don't think there would be any, any negative impacts
to the events. Um, as far as the cost, I can't pull up the time, I have what, what it will cost to have our, our DPW employees come in for the
Saturday-only closures, they'll have to come in, close the street, come back in, reopen it. Um, unless we have volunteers doing it for us, but um, that, that's something that we, we do that for the events that we have throughout the year, we do that again.
Sorry, I don't have. I thought we had done enough, that maybe, maybe the cost of how many employees it takes, and the trucks and what.
Two employees.
I remember, Chris just said a quality of life, it's three hours.
Three hours.
Three hours call in, and they're calling them. To get three hours in, then they get three hours on the backside when they call back. So they get paid for six hours. And it's all the same time, it's not weekend.
Right.
So I just want to go along with the street, there is two possible, so. Not to cut you off, Greg, I was excited, I remembered something.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, the other consideration, if this, whether or not it becomes a seven-day-a-week permanent thing or a trial basis, we can look at installing removable wallets, that would make it easier, um, for vendors to move in and out. They, they would, they would have a key rather than having to have DPW or someone else, so I think you're out for them. So I think, even if we you know, ultimately decided, we tried the trial, didn't work out, we're going back to something else. Um, those still might be a worth, worthy investment, because we do close Deep Street for other events. Um, and it might just make things easier, a little bit safer, uh, rather than with, in case you have some sort of a more substantial thing. Fire department can easily unlock those and get in from either direction, as opposed to if there are taco blocks, they have to come in from Deep Street.
True.
I was just gonna try to like, bring us back to the motion in front of us and just see if we are generally feeling as a council, um, like this Saturday trial is kind of on the table and the extended trial. Maybe we're not sure, I don't, I just don't like that. Um, because I would love to facilitate the, uh, Farmers Market being up there, and I think that, you know, even that wouldn't have to be, like, I think that right now they're, I don't know what their hours are.
Nine, nine to noon.
Yeah, it's not all day, so even if we did, you know, eight to five or whatever, and it wasn't even the full point four hours, I don't know. On Saturdays only, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get a sense of like where council is with the motion that's in front of us, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
So I, 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 yeah, I understand.
Sure.
Um, I, you know, the way I read this is that, um, if we approve this, my, my intention would be to ask that the last uh, council, uh, in May, um, would be brought before, uh, to discussion. And if, if, uh, things are not going well, then we would decide to pull the plug on it. Um, you know, we have that right, I'll, I'll quote them if you're trying.
First, I can. Last, I.
Could I, could I just say that, um, the, the council has the ability to introduce a motion to shut the whole thing down, period?
Yes.
At any time, right? Um, if we are going to have something that is gonna be successful in that extended period of time, there, there are people, there are people who need to know whether or not that's something that they should be planning on. Um, even knowing that the council may say, and it's one of the things I did to everyone of these merchants. You know, if something is not, you know, either impacting your business the way it needs to positively or if something winds up being, um, too difficult for the city, whether it's traffic flow or whatever it may be, that we might very well introduce a motion to shut the whole thing down. But I would say that we shouldn't presume that, um, that we're not gonna be successful. Uh, and I would ask instead that we presume that we might be successful and that if we are for some reason not, that we introduce a motion at that point to be adjusting as needs be.
Katie, are you making that a motion?
Not officially.
Done? Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mayor, do you have commitments from any vendors other than?
I, I can't get commitments from anybody until I have a council motion of approval, so no, I don't.
What about the, uh, uh, Farmers Market?
They are also waiting to see what council's gonna do. Um, and, and again, and you know, if we are gonna bring in, um, the, the level of, uh, engagement that we need to bring in, uh, in order for this to be something that is a, uh, a draw you know, across every day of the week. Which is, again, for the reasons that I've already detailed, I think of what's more appropriate than thinking about a weekend. We do need to start to make those connections with folks because they have their own schedules, they have to, if somebody, for instance, is going to sell baseball bats. You know, which might go over really, really well. Um, they have to determine, are they gonna hire staff? Are they, so there are things that just have to happen. And they cannot happen until such time as the council tells me that I can, you know, say so.
The only, the only thing that I think is that it would have the same impact on those folks, I mean, even having a hypothetical conversation with them, like, hey, we think we're doing this thing this summer would be the same as saying, hey, we're gonna do this thing this summer, and then be like, just kidding, you know, either way, they sort of need to prepare but not commit, because it could change at any time. I mean, either way we go.
With the, the exception being that they would be presuming that they would be bringing something to the street and that it would only be in the case of that not working, that they would be told that we are now looking at another scenario.
Yeah.
Uh, which is different from then, well, it's just, it's different from them saying, you know, maybe, maybe not, we're saying yes. With the contingency of, uh, you know, council action, we're either our business not being properly supported or we finding ourselves with logistical or other kind of issues that require changing, go ahead.
So, looking at my, I am respectfully asking as I can, I would call.
Sure.
On the motion as presented.
As presented.
As presented.
Do I? Do I, I don't think I need a second, do I?
Respectfully, it says I can respect.
Yeah, you're, you're all good, you're all good, Scott.
I hope we had a motion in a second.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just ask respectfully.
Yeah, yeah. So, so with that, so with that, thank you, Scott. With, with that, with that, Scott, thank you very much. Uh, we'll start with, uh, the vote, uh, and starting with Luke.
Councilmember Murphy?
Um, hi.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
As presented.
Yeah, say it.
Hi.
Thank you.
That's what you wanted. Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember LaPari Shu.
Oh, right.
Let's just have it.
What was literally, Dave, Dave, did you just tell councilman?
No, she, she, she didn't say I or any.
No, he was saying to respond.
She said, she said as moved, and I had said as moved, she was indicating the affirmative, but she didn't say the affirmative.
Right.
So I said she had to say it, rather than simply respond. I did not correct for the vote in any way.
You didn't. Uh, moving on, Katie?
Councilmember LaPari Shu.
Uh, with the understanding that we can change our minds at any time, okay.
There you go. Say okay.
Is the paragraph.
Councilmember Carson.
abstain, you had to say affirmative.
Councilmember Harrington.
Oh.
Councilmember Matheson.
Yes.
So Len, can I ask, uh, so one of the things that we do here sometimes is we abstain um, without reason, and I, you know, I know you don't need, I believe.
I don't think you need to call me out for.
No, well, I, I feel like, I, quite honestly, I feel like I do, because we, we know.
Actually, you don't.
We have four votes yes, we're missing two council members, so the vote fails, Scott votes no, and Len abstains.
And I voted the way I'm gonna vote, representing more than sixteen hundred people on the fifth ward.
So the vote fails.
Okay. Can I make a motion to re-enter number two? Or, re-enter number two, bring it back into the ring. Motion number two, which is the, as, as previously presented for the dates of April twenty-seventh, May fourth, May eleventh, May eighteen. Five minutes. Okay, okay, I'd like to make that motion.
So you're striking that whole resolve, the section of Deep Street beginning May thirtieth, portion?
Correct.
Second motion.
Further discussion?
Yeah. With.
Section. Yes, the motion as printed, but that's just been resolved on Saturday. Yeah, sure.
Could you repeat that, please? I didn't quite hear.
Yes. So it's the motion as printed, but it would only encompass the dates in the first resolution, April twenty-seventh, May fourth, May eleventh, May eighteenth, and May twenty-fifth. The Saturdays only, and strike the second paragraph, which is the seven-day-a-week closure from May thirtieth to November.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
This time.
Any further discussions? Could we have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Take the vote, please.
Councilmember Murphy?
Hi.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
Yes.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Right, moving on to. I'm sorry.
Um, just, just, I guess in respect of the time, uh, I know we have some folks up on motion four. Um, I don't know the protocol for this, would it be possible to switch to motions three, four, to number four first? Uh, seeing as we'll have more discussion. I know at least one of these individuals, who's schools.
I'm, I'm happy to do that, sure, so. Uh, no issue at all in doing that. So we will look at motion number four, that the common council concurs with the mayor's recommendation as approves the following appointments to the city of Oneonta residents. The city boards and door commissions for Parks and Rec, we got uh, Caleb Valk, uh, with the March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-seven March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-seven expiration date, and also on Parks and Rec, Karen Lang, uh, similar expiration date, March twenty-seven twenty-twenty-seven. Do I have a motion to approve? Katie, followed by Luke, uh, discussion, Annie, um, can I please call the vote?
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
All right.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Right. Thank you, and congratulations. Um, moving backward, uh, in time now to Market Street Reconstruction and Streetscape Project Conversation of Council, uh, relative to um, the, uh, the paperwork that many of you have still right in front of you, um, and, uh, I'll let Greg kick that off, please.
Yes.
For the whole?
Yes.
Number one.
Greg, the floor is yours.
Okay, so there, obviously, there's been a bunch of emails about this, there's been discussions, we've had some petitioners, um, explain much of what we're gonna talk about here, so I'm not gonna try to reiterate too much. Let's do it briefly, uh, essentially, the pictures that I handed out were the very similar, if not the same, pictures that were handed out earlier. Um, showing the different properties on Market Street, namely eighteen Market Street, twenty-dash-twenty-two Market Street, fifty-eight, sixty, and seventy. Um, these property owners, when they learned about the specific designs that the city had for the Market Street Streetscape project, they expressed some concerns about uh, their driveway access, in, in some cases, uh, driveways had been reduced in width, in some cases, a number of driveways had been reduced. Uh, so just briefly, as I had also explained in, in an email previously, um, the overall intent of the Market Street project, which was identified during the DRI Strategic Investment Plan, um, six years ago, six, seven years ago. Really, it hinges on walkability. It's, it's attempting to make Market Street part of downtown, a little bit more similar to Main Street than it is now, or really has been in, in many decades. Uh, urban renewal, we had our history lessons at the, the town hall. Um, how that demolished a good chunk of most of the buildings down there and left kind of a very open space, the things that have been developed since then um, have been a little bit more suburban in style, less, less urban, not so much like Main Street. Uh, a little, a little bit more car-centric, uh, that sort of thing. So looking at the DRI and trying to make that more pedestrian-friendly, increase the connectivity between Market and Main Street and Water Street. Um, and just make it more accessible, increase the pedestrian safety comfort. Um, it also includes a beautification component, there's new street trees being installed, uh, new decorative street lighting. Uh, we'll be maintaining the on-street parking as well as, um, doing some traffic calming measures, which really all of that has, has to do with, with traffic calming. So, so that was the impetus for the project. So as the architect, engineer, Wendell, and the city team working together, we're looking at different design decisions as to how, how do we really get into the details and design this. We did things like the raised crosswalks, there are additional crosswalks that, that don't exist now that are mid-block. Um, and those will be raised, um, the raised crosswalks, essentially, it's the car needs to drive up, go over the flat portion, which is where pedestrians would cross the street and go back down again, a six-inch, uh, elevation change. That sort of thing, obviously, it forces cars to slow down a little bit if they're, they're already going too fast and it creates a little bit more visibility for pedestrians crossing the street, the curb widths at those crossings narrow up. So you just have the width of the road, similar to what you have on Main Street. Um, we're at the Uh, where at the crosswalks, the, the road is only twenty feet wide, twenty-two feet wide, as opposed to the full width where the parking spaces are. Uh, that's something that makes pedestrians very visible to vehicles and vice versa, increases safety. Um, we did the same thing at the intersections of Chestnut Street Extension and South Main Street, where those entire intersections are raised, so you go up on one side as a vehicle. Go through the intersection, come back down again, that incorporates the same concept. Um, with driveways, generally, we looked at trying to right-size the widths, um, not, not make them any wider than they needed to be to have. Adequate, safe vehicular access, any driveway or, um, you know, side street turning movements. By vehicles, that's a potential conflict point between pedestrians and vehicles, so if we can minimize those, perhaps there are more driveways that are next. Necessary, perhaps they're wider than necessary, um, let's look and see if we can narrow those down, when you compare to Main Street, there aren't many driveways. Um, there's a, there's an alley and there's some side streets, but for the most part, you know, if you could imagine. Maybe thirty years from now, Market Street looking a little bit more like that, where the, the empty spaces are filled in, the buildings that are constructed up against the sidewalk, not so far set back from the street. It creates that more urban walkability, uh, walkable feel that, that we're looking for. So anyway, I digress, back to the, the issues that were raised with, with these particular property owners, you know, I, I failed in, in, in not contacting seventy. Or fifty-eight and sixty Market Street last summer as, as intended, we, we had, we had drawn up a plan to eliminate two out of the three driveway entrances, and I was. Intending to have discussion with them about how we could, they could potentially, or, or the, their successors, whoever they may sell or lease the property to. Could reor- reorient the parking in the parcel and, you know, trying to make the best of both worlds with our goals, with the Streetscape being a walkability thing, but also not. You know, certainly not intending to eliminate their parking, um, but that, there was a misconnection there, I'll take responsibility for that. And ultimately, when we did sit down or stand out in the parking lot and talk together about this, you know, I think we've reached a, a reasonable solution. And I wanted to get the council's thoughts on this as well, because again, it came from the council, and the Strategic Investment Plan was this council, Hugo. Approved this concept of, of really trying to make Market Street more like the rest of downtown, so I, I wanna make sure that we're finding the right balance between. The goals of the Streetscape walkability component and the needs of the existing property owners, so. If we wanna focus on that one, um, you've seen the pictures of it, uh, if you look at these eleven by seventeen plans, there's four sheets front and back. I started in the middle of course, if you look at LP dash zero three, that's indicated on the bottom of the right hand corner. Uh, yeah, zero three. So, look, looking kind of in the center of the page, do you see the crosswalk that is shown, and you see Broad Street labeled, we still call it Broad Street. And then obviously, on the, the bottom, you know, middle of the page, lower side of the street, that's where Stella Luna is. Uh, we had shown the first driveway on the left, that's right next to that crosswalk, has a twenty-two foot driveway, what we indicate there now, that's. That's their first driveway, and then the next two driveways, as you head east to the right in the page, are also driveways to that same property. Uh, I should note, the, the first driveway, technically, the, the way the parcel lines are drawn. That's sort of a shared driveway between their parcels and the next property over, and I think that's the easement that Benny talked about, uh, to the, the railroad. So, and the way their parking lot is laid out, as I think there's a picture showing. You, aerial view, you have this one. All three of those driveways are, are, are required for the way the parking lot's laid out now, the parking lot in the future could be laid out differently. Uh, just with repainting, um, where you wouldn't need all three entrances, but that would result in a reduction in the number of parking spaces in the lot. Um, we are adding, or actually already have added parking spaces on the street, on Market Street, as an aside, that, that used to not be painted there. Um, so anyway, moving along, the second driveway, we show it sixteen feet, that was the sort of. Question I wanted to ask council, so do we wanna maintain three driveways at this one parcel, um, it would allow them to maintain their existing parking lot layout. Exactly as it is, not lose any parking spaces, um, and, and operate the same way that they had in the past. Um, alternatively, if that's not what we're gonna do, we reduce the number of driveways, and that has an impact on them, which they, which they've articulated. Um, so, you know, I think our, our proposed compromise i- in, in widening the two driveways on the end to twenty-two feet wide, they were previously, I believe. There was only one shown, it was shown at sixteen feet, um, I think, based on our discussions. That would be something that, that the property owners would agree to. Don, I saw your. Uh, they would like to keep that as well, they, they would not like to have to change the layout of their parking lot, granted, there's not a use there now, but, you know, they're looking, well, they're, they're renting.
As you guys were here at the last meeting, when I proposed everything, and I'm sorry I'm speaking, I have to speak, because I wanna make it very clear. That we have agreed, because we wanna compromise, we want this to happen, but. First one is, you can't touch, because it's an easement to the railroad, to the people that go in and out of there, the other two. I've, I've compromised with my brother, that it's twenty feet, you wanna bring it down to sixteen, that's fine. And the next one is, I think, twenty-eight feet, and you wanna bring it down to twenty-two feet, and that's fine, because if you close me in. If you close that one in, in the middle, okay, I'm losing seven spaces, I am trying to rent this place, I have people looking at it right now. And I wanna stay in business, because I should stay in business, okay, that's all I wanna say.
So the, the impact, if, if we, uh, have the all three driveways as they are now, I think we lose four. Parking spaces on the street as they were originally drawn, um, but if you just, they're comparing two driveways versus three, it's, it's a matter of two parking spaces on the street to. To maintain.
You don't lose much, I do suck, you don't lose much, so.
Just to say the fact.
I know, I know you are, I appreciate that, right?
So that, that's one, um, we can just kinda go through them all, and if you'd like, or if you wanna talk, question?
Can I ask a question? This tree, that's immediately adjacent, could that be moved, uh, west a little bit, or does we lose that tree?
I think we can just adjust that tree location, it actually is probably almost okay as it is, maybe a little bit, um, the one. The furthest right twenty-two foot driveway, that tree will have to be planted a little further to the east.
Okay.
To avoid that. Yeah, Luke, Luke.
So, yeah, so just to make sure, I was, I was, there's a compromise that folks came up with was easements sixteen and twenty-two essentially?
Uh, I said, three driveways, twenty-two foot wide, sixteen foot wide, and twenty-two.
Yeah, that's what I, that's, okay, right, that's, that's, okay, okay, just making sure.
That, that will allow, it, it won't require any changes to, to private property. Um, and it will maximize their parking space, it'll impact slightly the on-street spaces, and I'll have more driveway cuts, which, again. The reason we were looking at min- minimizing driveway cuts is every time you have a chance to turn in, there's another chance for pedestrian vehicle.
The whole purpose of this is to stimulate business on, new businesses on, uh, Market Street, a- as I understand it. So I think the first step in doing that is make sure that the existing business owners and property owners are happy. And they're only asking for minor changes, and, you know, the, the argument about, you know, pedestrians on going across curb cuts. That doesn't hold any water with me, I, I think the most important thing we could do right now is make sure that the existing owners are pleased with the project. And that we're not hurting them in any way.
Can I ask a question? I'm sitting federal part of union, not asked, just curious.
This is, I'm sorry, you're at, 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 we're out of order here, Cecilia?
I just wanted to say that, um, I'm really quite impressed that you were able, that City was able to negotiate. Um, what you've been able to do here, um, because I think the goals that the city actually has here are incredibly important, if you're running on it. Which is to make running out of the walk-in city, to make it interesting, to make it have useful activities. To make the experience of walking comfortable for people, I mean, this is all just what Urban Bening has been telling us. And what data has shown, people who live in walk-in facilities are happier, and so I think that the. Purpose of the city actually being quite concerned about these driveways is pedestrian safety, and I think that's incredibly applicable and important. It's what the city does, which is to look after, so I just wanna point, point that out, that of course, the concerns of local business owners are. You know, fundamental to decision-making, however, having a walkable city is a goal, I think that Oneonta needs to advance, and I think doing that. Do, doing this project, having a, a conversation regarding the walkability, what that means, um, for various spaces in the city, it's just. It's just imperative.
I'm not sure that a, a curb cut reduces walkability, I, I don't think it does.
The, the original proposal was quite different, that the city had come up with, it was really to emphasize walkability, which means. Not having the accessible, there was, I think, at least one, uh, portion of the driveway that was going to be green space.
Scott?
Oh, great, to answer your question, I'm, I'm having a compromise, I think it was, it was good, we could down and talk, and.
So further on this piece of property, Katie?
I mean, I, the, I, I don't know that this is the optimal parking lot layout personally, just as someone who drives, and I think also. Um, that, your proposal will see an increase in walking traffic because of the new location of the transit hub. Um. You know, but that being said, I know that this has been kind of a long road to get on a pavement that might go forward, so, um, I think. Overall, the project on Market Street is really important, and I wanna make sure that it, it'll work, so, um, I think that, you know. Maybe it's not perfect, but if it's okay with both, the majority of both parties, then, then that's.
Well, we, that's, that's what I, that's, just wanna ask, uh, which, which parking, uh, one that you say seems okay, the.
The compromise that's shown here.
We've had all along, the one that we just talked about, all three stay there, thank you, thank you, that's all I need.
All right, so basically, we're just looking at a consensus of council here, and, and I think Greg, you wanna move on to the, our, our next piece?
Sure, e- east or west? Harvest, okay, so, uh. Yes, seven, seventy Market Street, same, same page. Yeah, so the next, the next one down, you see, uh, opposite of South Main Street intersection. Their existing driveway cut there now is fifty feet wide roughly, uh, just measuring on Google Earth, um. We had proposed, so the way their parking lot layout works, and there's some pictures here, if you're not familiar, from the last page. Of the staple picture sheet, uh, the top picture shows the entrance, uh, they, they put in a fence and a gate. That basically encloses their parking lot on both ends, we've got two driveways, this driveway is the entrance, they've also signed for, uh. Food deliveries and emergency vehicle parking area, uh, hopefully, they don't need to go there very often. Um, but so in front of the gate, using the fifty foot roughly wide driveway cut, you, they allow for their food deliveries, DoorDash to stop. Not having to be able, because they can't access through the gate, that's for residents only, and then I guess emergency vehicles, who was to the left. Um, on the next picture down, that's the easternmost exit, so it's a one-way exit from, for residents through the gate. Um, that, I'm not sure the width on that, that's thirty something feet wide, um, that also has an area next to the gate. On private property behind the sidewalk for, uh, food deliveries, other deliveries drop-offs. Um, and then there's a, not pictured here, there's another curb cut in the middle of the building, like right in front of the building on Market Street, that isn't really a driveway, it's. That used to be a loading dock.
The old loading dock, right?
Yeah, and that's what I think Angela was describing, or both of you were, as, uh, uh, they have some people that, that live there that might use that for loading and, and access. Um, another issue that you guys had mentioned tonight, but I've mentioned before, was the on-street parking there, there is no on-street parking, there's, there's only parking. Specifically, specifically for the DMV driver test area, uh, I've reached out to the DMV and haven't connected with them yet, haven't heard back, but. Seeing if maybe we can move that elsewhere, I think that would be a solution where that, that center driveway cut, which really isn't something that. Is at all desirable from, you know, the, the MU one code perspective, if we can have that, you know, those parking spaces in front there. Um, I, I think that would be a, a reasonable compromise to be able to have people loading and unloading. Uh, it's not an area, if you didn't have the DMV there, I don't think it's an area that there are many people parking now. Um, as far as the driveways themselves in our discussions, the owners had agreed with the, the sixteen foot wide, as we had shown, which is on. The backside of this stage, LP. Keeping that as designed, which was the exit, uh, so the, the curb cut. Cut across, you drive across the driveway, the sixteen foot wide. And then one-way traffic, a car is six and a half feet wide, it's. It's, uh.
Supposed to be sixteen metal, and then the twenty on the, on the, on the exit.
We, we, the design we have, my understanding, I wasn't a part of that, so it's a big conversation with.
Sixteen on the, on the end, and then sixteen in the middle.
And then the front, the first one.
The front was the one that we, we talked, we talked about, making that the driveway that goes over to that.
So the, I mean, that's, the, the idea of adding a driveway in the middle of the building and front.
It's not a code issue, we spoke to code, they sold, they told, they told us that, that, uh, it's all cobblestone up there. It was, this is supposed to be, it was supposed to be a future project, and we didn't know this was going on.
We're just trying to keep the driveway right.
So that was supposed to be. Uh, the driveway to go, if, if you go in there and it has a temporary loading and unloading to the left, so you should. If we, the building that would have had, for the tenants, would have had the four spots there for the, for tenants in the front. For loading and unloading, they could drive out and then park in the parking. The, the, the big one, the, the original one was, whatever it was, whatever the original size was, whatever you added for.
The main entrance?
Main entrance.
Like fifty feet wide.
Right.
So, so, so from the city staff's perspective, and given trying to balance the goals of the projects. And the needs of the property, fifty feet wide is excessive. Um, having the ability to pull in and back out for the food deliveries, I think with on-street parking for food deliveries. And their ability to pull in, you know, and maneuver to get back out, um, you know, we'll look at a similar issue down at the other end of the street where. Where that owner is asking for the ability to pull in and back out again, or, or vice versa. I, I think to draw a balance at fifty foot wide is, is excessive and, and unnecessary, I think having the. I think what we've proposed on LP zero three is a. Thirty, I mean, that, that even is, is quite wide, but that gives you, I think, plenty of room for somebody to be able to pull in, if they're, they're a delivery, certainly an emergency vehicle. The keypad where it is now.
It's on the thirty feet, keypad to the west.
Okay, yes. Yeah, that, I think that is, I mean, that's a significant reduction, but still a very wide driveway.
Was that enough to know? Trucks will be able to turn around in there? See, the issue was that, what, the way it is now, the, the UPS trucks and FedEx trucks pull up to the gate. And all they do is back up a little bit, then, I mean, they don't even go up to the street, and are able to turn around right in that spot.
Yeah.
To pull out forward, and not to back out.
So I think this is, for the council, this is a natural, I don't wanna actually conflict in a bad way, but it's a conflict in. The intent of the project and the existing use and what you'd like it to be, like, we're, we're looking at something to be more. You know, a little less vehicular friendly, a little more, there's, there's a, there's a balance to be struck, I don't know what that is, but to have a truck to be able to pull in and, and do a U-turn. Um, doesn't really jive with the intent of the design of the Streetscape, if we wanna go away from that, we can, and, and, and keep the fifty foot wide driveway. For a one-way entrance.
It would be. Cause then, uh. If here, there's two parts, but there's not one. Okay, so you have to remember that too, it's seventy and sixty-eight. That's what that, that's what that location, so it's.
The building is served by the parking lot.
And, and the two, because they're too far, so they're too bright, but that's why they're there.
Right, we're, we're not talking about taking away the second driveway.
Okay, so, from the, from the, from the. And the keybuds are less, which is fine, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I think that's, that's more, more than necessary, and I think it's a fair, more than fair compromise.
We're talking about the first drive, my back is closed signal.
Yeah.
First drive, keypad's here.
Thirty feet to the right.
Thirty, so we're going thirty feet to the right, so we still have the parking over here, like we saw on that one Tuesday or whatever.
Yeah, there's sixteen foot wide gate. Yeah, there's sixteen-foot wide gate would be kind of right lined up where the keypad is. And then they have that additional like area in front of the fence that would be for the drop-off.
Truck gonna come in, we're not, that's, nothing, nothing there from the sidewalk back is changing. The truck is still coming in and back up. We're just shrinking down the driveway coming out. So I think that's, I think we're on the same page. I just don't think we're seeing it right. Right? Cause you, you get your UPS truck in, they're gonna still back up to that spot and then you still pull out and go.
If we're looking, uh people sometimes are in those spots, I don't know, but like if we're looking at moving the the road test area, but that, could that be for like fifteen-minute spaces? Because it would accommodate the loading concern that you have for the mothers. It would accommodate FedEx, it would accommodate DoorDash. It would accommodate people who just need to like run into the liquor store really quick, which is right up Stone Street Way. Um I don't think that anyone is depending on that location for long-term parking. You obviously have plenty of parking for your tenants in the back there and your secure lot. That, I see that as a potential solution to be able to minimize, and again, to Cecilia's point, still kind of achieve the goal of making the sidewalk more pedestrian-friendly, but um still giving you what you need for the functionality for your building. What do you, what does anybody think?
I think we might have mentioned, talked about that a little bit, um or maybe it was more refined about the fifteen-minute loading, but um yeah, I think that's, that certainly makes sense to me as far as fifteen-minute loading. The city could sign, you know, uh assign any time limits even like there.
Okay.
Luke?
And on the street, if we added parking, it could be like very short term and that would accommodate like your deliveries that you're moving and all that kind of stuff.
Right, Luke?
Yeah, um it, I mean, it's, it sounds like we're more or less on the same page with thirty feet. Um and if, if so, then I think it's fine.
But the other two spots. But the other two.
Those two.
There's two.
I think, I think the.
It's a small, it's a small.
Yeah, right. Let, let, let's let Greg answer. I mean, I think Katie's solution, suggestion regarding that front middle driveway cut, which I understand you'd like to make that a new drive, a fuller driveway with more pavement that you can pull in onto and have people park and load. I think being able to have loading spaces on the street there, fifteen-minute parking would accommodate that.
I believe when the tenants are gonna be on the street, which has a
But I mean, that's.
Parallel, it's parallel curb.
Set me in front of their lakes.
It's like ten feet out from where you're.
Yeah, middle street. That's, that's gonna be on private property.
Yeah, I mean, if they wanted to be on private property for safety, they could pull right into, you have ample asphalt on either side of your building.
And I have, and, and ample space in front of it, so.
To me, that equates to front air parking, which we don't allow in the city. I wouldn't be in favor of
Well, it's not, you're not doing a curb cut there, cause there's already a curb cut there. Okay, that's been there.
I wouldn't be in favor of going for it with a curb cut. To, because.
There's already one there, there's already.
Right, but we're reconstructing the street, so I wouldn't be in favor of replacing that curb.
Yeah, you're reconstructing the street because you, you guys lay not that, you lay not that plan, but that's already there. Okay, you, you.
I understand that.
Alright, so you can't take it away.
David?
Yeah, I mean, we're leaving off the street, right? And it's not, I mean, I'm a, I. I wish it was thirty-seven years and that, I would have stayed the whole time, so I, I, I actually was really excited. I was like, oh, they're gonna like do something with it, but I think just, again, considering the intent of the project is to get cars, you know, out on the street and not cropping as much, I think one, two, three, four curb cuts, one of which at least is like very large. I, I just, I don't think we need extras there. And I understand that it's existing, but I think that the idea of this is to move Market Street forward, not keep it exactly the same, or we wouldn't spend millions of dollars on it.
Okay, further? Do we have further conversation on this? It seems like Greg, I'm gonna just throw it back to you. Are we, where are we at with this? So, I mean, okay, we've got the thirty-foot main entrance slash drop-off area. On the other end of the building, sixteen-foot exit, one-way exit, um but also allowing uh deliveries on that end. It doesn't impact the, the age area behind the sidewalk. And then in the middle, eliminating that curb cut and having on-street parking, which we have to make it, change the regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, two eighty-two request.
I think that's important to note that we're like taking into account the function, um the current function of you know, the necessary functions of the building and making basically a direct accommodation on Street more to maintain that function, so we're still keeping the project in line with the goals. And that would be my suggestion, but again, we just support what happens.
Still, we don't find that parking?
That's a good question. It's a lot.
Your battle and the wrong battle. You need to work with them. They've done wonderful.
Yeah, guys, 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 got, David, I've got.
Grandpa Council, Grandpa Council.
Right, right.
Most of the families and children, most of them want to live there because they don't feel safe. Just the, still the front apartments, but back, they have plenty of parking. They thought it's just front apartments. But my fear is they're not gonna feel comfortable loading or unloading.
The street.
Finding parking on the street. Oh, I have to wait five more minutes for this one to be where the convenience is already there. They love it, they're safe, they feel safe, they want to be there. My fear is losing them and then and then the word of mouth, oh, you don't want to live there, you're never gonna find parking, you're never gonna be able to do your groceries or bring your children in, or that's like my fear.
Yes, Scott?
Mark, you showed a slide of potential lock in stone using toilets, correct? Of a footpath.
Yes, yes.
So when that changes the pedestrian traffic, we're talking about in the future.
Potentially.
Be with this operating, we'll change our fifteen-minute walk, you know, whatever I'm trying to accomplish, you know what I'm saying? Like, would you need to worry so much more about this if we're gonna go with that?
There, there are many um many conversations to be had um prior to that being something that we would call, I mean, it's, it's the aspiration.
Katie, uh can I just say something?
Yes, let, wait, I'm sorry.
So.
Greg, just talk, uh, L- L- Len, please.
Yeah, and so the access to the front. Can you make access from left and right for their tenants, because I'm looking at this thinking that you could, instead of having that middle, but you could actually allow them to have access. Is that a code issue? I mean, Katie brought up, they're not parking there long here, they're unloading, so.
You can just pave along the front, like a driveway in front of the building?
Are they allowed to pass like pressure run? I think that's what they, the owner said earlier, instead of just pressure run. Are they allowed to have that?
I, I would have to refer that to the code enforcement officer. I understand you guys have contacted them. That would be a process for them to get probably a variance, I would assume, to be able to add that in front of the building, because it wouldn't meet the, the current MU one code. You know, it's not an existing.
Or they could use GeoGrid, that would be permeating the water. Is this a compromised word?
I don't think that, talking about what they do on private property is something that, that we should do now, because that's ultimately, that's a code the permitting process that might require a site plan review or a variance or, or none of that. That's, that's kind of a separate process. Um I think what we can talk about is.
If we are limiting that driveway tonight, then they'll be faced with that, and I want to understand that ramification first. Right, so if the council says, cut the middle off, then how do they provide that access for their tenants? And that's all it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the sidewalk would provide pedestrian access from the parking and drop-off areas on either end of the property, and then you'd also have the parking on the street there, which would be right in front. That was what we have to do.
So, when, you know, maybe, maybe they saw Steve's in the back, maybe he already knows. When this was built into an apartment, the, the apartment complex, was there any kind of variance or anything given for that in the front for like a driveway?
No, so I mean, this, this, this was converted a long time ago.
Okay, right.
But the current code says that the construction of basically like curb cuts and access should be limited, so if a curb, if the entrance is removed, the code doesn't want to put it back. The idea that we're trying to build driveway, parking, and put a code specific, it's always nice.
So what you're saying, like, is, so if we, we as a council said, no, we're taking that out.
You have to get its own variants.
To, to put it back.
More than that to approve it, they have to build it to city specs. They have to have approval from the engineering department to do that, so because the code says that the engineering department is the one that approves curb cuts into the city sidewalk. And that's how it's all of it. We don't approve curb cuts.
Is there any restrictions, Steve, on allowing them to have like GeoGrid or pressure run to provide access? Cause it looks like the driveways on the left and the right are large enough that you could like go into the new driveways, whether they're sixteen-foot and then go down, make access to, it looks like three doors in the front. Is there anything that restricts them? I'm just trying to understand, if we say, close off that middle tonight, what will they, the property owners, have to deal with and try and make, make the access, whether tenants or potential tenants?
They can't go park.
No parking, but just access for them to load and unload.
You're loading zones, there's like screening requirements. I mean, that's what I told them. They're gonna have to talk to me, they're gonna have to give me an actual site plan, want to actually review it, because I'm not just gonna shoot off the head and be like, yeah, do it. I mean, that's part of it, is I need to have, I need to know what they're actually closing. Because they might need some variants if they don't want to follow the code, so I can't just say abstractly, yes, you could do that, because I don't know what they're trying to do.
You need any answers to this tonight, Greg, or is that something that they can propose with?
It would be very helpful if we had it tonight, because of the litigation threat.
Okay.
And if there's, if there's an agreement, there's an agreement, it's solidified, then it'll avoid the need for litigation.
Okay, thank you.
But you know, Chris, alright, we spent two days. We spent two days together and we all agreed on this, that they, we're, we're compromising, not the, excuse me, I don't want to say agreement, I apologize. But we're compromising of our livelihood to do this, this and that. And I mean, Katie, to me, Angela brought up the point about getting rid of the uh, the, the the test, the testing stuff, and then today, when I walked on my property, you know what my sign says? The DMV now can do it in front of me. So, you know, this is really, to me, you know, to me, I'm sorry to speak, but to me, it's a little ridiculous, because we as owners are trying to compromise. Luke was there today, he was at the other meeting. Why don't you guys realize that we are owners? We are, we are part of, I, I was part of the, the progress in Ollieana for fifty years.
Alright, Vinnie, Vinnie.
I know, but.
Alright, please.
We were told that this was gonna be left alone. Now they're trying to take the spot away from them. It's not right.
So folks are trying to work this out here.
Well, but I did also, I did, I just forgot to mention, you know, we were, before, we were student housing.
I remember, and your family has got a really long life.
Right, so we went from student housing to accommodate families.
Money, we made more money with students to help this community to have an image, and now I'm worried about them leaving, because they're not gonna feel comfortable. And I, and I, and I'm just focusing on mothers with young children.
Right. Okay, so going back to, to, to Greg, where we are right now on this. Again, to David's point, it would be great to be able to get this somewhat resolved, but I'm with you, please.
That I think that we reached a resolution with the owners of Salona. Does that sound right? So, okay, so I think we can.
We got one down.
That property.
That's correct.
Right, okay, so.
Are we gonna have that in writing, by the way? Mr. Uh.
Reported.
Yes. Yeah, Vinnie, yes.
Okay.
Moving on, so we're saying?
I, I just wanted to, I just kind of wanted to put a.
Yes, Salona, Salona, uh at, at this point, we have an agreement and we are working our way through um this, uh this next property here. Um and it seems as if we are at a place where we are almost there. Sounds like we're, we're two-thirds of the way to an agreement on, on Seventy Market. The two driveways on the ends, I think, are resolved. The middle driveway, does the council want there to be a driveway that some, that someone can pull in and back out of um in the middle of the building?
That's not, that's not what's gonna do.
We cannot address the separate code uh process of, of approving whatever parking or loading or whatever area you want in front of there. That's a totally separate issue right now. It's just a driveway cut, a little straight-in and straight-out thing, right? So that would be what the, the city council is considering right now. So, additional council conversation on this. So I think the question that remains on Seventy Market is the middle driveway that, right now, is there's a cut, and I'm not sure how wide it is, it's, I don't know if that's wrong. It goes straight up to the building. Understanding they would like to do something else through a code process separate from this. Do we want to keep that driveway cut? So a car can either pull in and back out into Market Street, or they can pull up back in and pull out of Market Street. It would probably eliminate one or two parking spaces on the street, that section. I'd have to look at that um closer, but that would be the the question that remains. Katie has.
You know how I think of it, yeah.
I agree, it's not one space, it's half a space, because you have a fire hydrant right there.
Okay, could be that there's, that, yeah, I said, I, I don't know exactly.
Um, I agree. There's a fire hydrant sitting right in the, on the corner of the, of that direction. So the fire hydrant is there, so you can't park.
Okay.
Right there, so it'd be half where that bravery is, because you're on sixteen feet.
Okay. Looking for directions from the council. Yeah, that's, that's, that's really what we need here. Um so Luke, I just want to go around the, the okay, so Luke and Katie, so, uh, so so a trio here. Um, let me come from the other direction as they're conversing.
I, I'm not sure, wha- wha- what, what are we talking about here now?
Let's make it clear.
So. The, the two, there's two driveways that are okay.
Yeah, the end.
Right on that. And it's the middle, so the question is, do we approve the middle driveway?
No.
Um, I still say we should keep the property owners happy, so if it's there already, I wouldn't want to take it away.
Right, and Scott?
I, I struggle because I grew up down here, and I told Greg this story. I actually grew up down, my grandfather ran the Long Island School. So the hippies and stuff that's down through there, and it's always been there, those guys have always been like that. You know, I just, I have maybe, maybe I'm having a senior moment where I'm looking back.
You're too young for a senior.
I, I just, I don't know. I, I mean, I like, I kind of like what we're talking about, if they could do it, but I understand Steve says he can't shoot off to the end, he needs to see exactly what they want. I do think we're two-thirds there. I, I really don't know how I feel about removing this, knowing that they may not be able to put it back if we could come up with. If they could do what they wanted to do, or if we could go all down in front of the building, then, and I know Dave said he wants to answer tonight. It'd be helpful, and he doesn't have any issue.
It would be helpful. Len?
I don't know. Yeah, that's why I keep asking the question, look at Robin, Angela's uh there's an arrow showing going traffic, I guess, going to the left over in front of the building.
Yeah, if, if we were able to go, it's gonna go, go into that driveway into the left, because then they come out, it comes off on the left driveway. But that would have no pedestrian.
That, that's only providing for one, two, three, I'm counting right, four. Two, three, four, seven, and the fourth door. There's four doors. Yes, I see four doors, right, four doors.
So, Len, where are you coming down on this?
We, Greg, we talked to Seventy Market Street a while ago, or?
No.
This is new to them.
New as in the last month or so, yeah.
Three weeks. Well.
I mean, I.
We do what, what, when this was happened? We didn't, I didn't find out, we didn't find out some rifles. I will, when, did we say the whole way to the building?
Or should we? I guess, I'm with Don, I'm with Seven, it's a cut.
You're with him?
With Don, we'll keep it as it is, I mean, we're restricted, we're down to fifty to thirty. And then twenty, whatever it is, down to sixteen. It just takes me back to like Gardner Street.
Gardner Street? Are we at a public meeting? Yeah, let's, let's not talk about, uh, other things, let's keep focused on this, and it seems like we have no consensus from council, we have. Am I, do we? Did I miss something?
Well, I gotta, I gotta. I just remember some, Market Street's still on the sixth floor as well. I represent them.
Yeah.
So I had to represent them all the way.
Yes.
And save the emails.
So then, yeah, basically, we are. Okay, so eighteen and twenty dash twenty-two Market Street, moving to LT zero ones. Um, Seventy Market is the first section, will be under control. Okay, so eighteen Market Street, formerly a building that burned down in the nineties, um, converted to a parking lot, must be right after that. Um, that is the parking lot, fifty-three spaces, as Brian mentioned before, for the, the two buildings, I believe the front building is just offices, and, and the back. Bigger building is where all the apartments are. Uh, so that off-street parking, which is a separate parcel, eighteen Market, as well as some portion of the, the rear of the property that is known as twenty dash twenty-two Market, that's the parking for twenty dash twenty-two Market. Um, so that driveway cut, we discussed with Brian, and we're willing to increase that to twenty-two feet wide from the sixteen feet that we had, uh, designed. Uh, he seemed to be in agreement with that. Um, the hang up a little bit is the next driveway over, and if you look at the pictures, the front, second page.
That was about the lot at eighteen Market Street.
Yeah, that's the parking. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's all I, I.
Uh, so then these, these pictures, like, the two buildings, there's a driveway that kind of forms an alley, that's about twelve feet wide, between the, the stairway and the edge of the. Um, there aren't really any driveway cuts now, because there is no curb.
Right.
Um. So, you know, Brian would like us to have a twelve-foot wide driveway cut there to allow, as you can see in the one picture, there's a, there's a, a car parked there, he explained earlier that you can fit four or five, if you wanted to stack them in there back to back. Uh, typically, I don't see that's what's done, but it could be. Um, but in addition to the fifty-three space private parking lot next door. Um, this one to four, I suppose, spaces. You, you know, in reviewing, again, like, since they're two colliding or conflicting perspectives, there's looking at the walkability, safety, and what, what is meeting the MU one code. Granted, we're not doing a site plan review here, but we're from a street skate perspective, we kind of are. Um. We should be looking at, if someone were to request this driveway cut. Whether you approve it or not has to do with whether the property is adequately served. Um, I think, granted, there are two different parcels, Brian has pointed out, he could sell eighteen Market Street that parcel and. Not have the parking for his apartments anymore, I'm not sure what he would do then, but. Um, he could do that, but the fact that he owns both, and the parking lot is there serving the building, um, it seems as though it's adequately served by just having the parking lot driveway cut, and not needing. The second one, which is kind of the alleyway. But we disagree on that, Brian would like us to keep it, so the question for the council is, keep the driveway cut or not, just like the other one, um, same kind of scenario, um, maybe this will be quicker, but. Yeah, Katie.
Um, how many apartments are there at the two properties?
Um, there's seventeen, but they're, they're big apartments, and there's other people that park in my lot, besides just my tenants, because there's a.
Oh, it's not like residence?
It's mostly just my residence, but, you know, there's some of the people that park in my lot, whether it's like teenager, visitor, or cop a pot, say they don't have enough parking. Um, but, yeah, I would also like to point out that, um, you know, when I first learned about this project a year ago, that, you know. It said I'd be losing all the, um, the front door parking, and it was fine, so. I guess I'm losing, like, five spots across the front, you know, I, I don't have access to the front of the building anymore. Because, uh, you know, there's gonna be a sidewalk there. So, yeah, I didn't give Greg any trouble over that, it's, you know, that's fine, there's, it's gonna be a sidewalk. I just, a year ago, I said, you just can't cut that driveway. I thought we were in an agreement at that time, the driveway was gonna stay, but when I saw the plan, um, after I had the floor lit, and I saw it in January, it's, I was kind of like, really wake up that something in the driveway, it's like cut off.
Okay, thanks for answering my question, that does seem like a lot of parking for seventeen spaces, but it sounds like you. Do it as public parking, even though it's really, it's more than adequate for the tenant. Um, for me, since that, since there is no curb there, and we are drastically reducing the amount of asphalt. And drastically increasing the walkability around those two buildings. Um. I wouldn't be opposed to that additional cut, like you said, it's, it's two parcels, um, two parts doesn't seem excessive.
Can I, can I, yeah, so, um, I think this is pretty clear, so I just kinda wanna see if we get a, a sense of the council on this, can I start with you?
I mean, it's, if it's. I.
Okay, Cecilia?
Um. My, my default is always, and, and just to be clear. I think that earlier, in response to Don's comment, um, about our priorities as a council and as a city government, I think that we have to prioritize walkability. And of course, that comes with the responsibility then speaking to and dealing with local property owners who have concerns around parking. So, so the rubber hits the road.
Sorry.
Um. So I, I guess I would be. Understanding of the need, and following Katie's point, of, these are small cuts, and it's within a broader context of a, of pedestrian space.
Right, so, um, thank you, I've, so we've got a consensus building, and can I come back to you, no? Okay, Len?
Yeah, I'm there. If, um. It's safe, and, uh, Brian signed it up on the twelve foot. Um. Yeah. And the twenty-two is agreed on, and I'm good.
Scott?
So. I'm trying to keep my personal feeling on this one, because. I was kind of shocked when we were gonna have a meeting set up, and then in the bottom hour, we had to walk away from it. I don't think that was in good spirit, but to keep my personal.
Good spirit from my perspective, I like my clients to be represented.
Yes, no, I know that, I meant, I meant.
But, but getting, getting to your opinion.
So. With that, yeah, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Don, your next up?
I have a question about, um, you, you, it, it's the whole thing about the walkability and everything, if we look across the street where the bus terminal is, how wide are the, um, the, the entrances and exits for the buses? I mean, they gotta be pretty wide, right?
Yeah, they're, they're designed to be wide enough to allow the turning lanes, I don't.
And nobody has raised the question that that's gonna be dangerous, and those are big vehicles, so, and I don't think it's dangerous, I think people, if you say big bus, and you're walking along the sidewalk, either the bus driver waves you through, or you, you stop, you know? So, all of these, you know, they're, they're small, they're driveways, curb cuts.
So your opinion is?
I think we shouldn't allow it.
Okay, all right, so I think we've got a, a sense of council, it's a unanimous sense of council on that, um.
That's a meal that they say at times, you guys are amazing, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've found ourselves to the end of, um, those four motions. And. I'll, I'll let folks access here. Do you feel like you wanna? You need to give a city administrator's report, and you'll get some next big. We have another meeting next week. Exactly, every week. All right, so if, if I could, I just wanna get the meeting back in gear here, thank you, guys, thank you.
I, I, I haven't checked, man, I'm sorry, I told the old school. That's been great, I appreciate you. All right, be good. You too, you, you, you're, I didn't, with the same one, right? I'll go back to Connecticut, thank you, guys, appreciate it, really great.
All right. Still got council here? We're all the back, all right, so, uh, we would, Katie? Yeah, yes, exactly, so, Katie? Okay, all right, got everybody? Scott, I got you, okay, so, um, just ask Greg, he's fine with, you know, we're meeting in the week, so we're going to push off the city administrator's report to next week. Um, this communications piece, um, will only take us about another hour and a half. So what I would, what I would, what I'm gonna ask respectfully is that we're gonna get together on April second next week, right? I'm gonna, I wanna defer if council's, uh, approving of that this communications conversation, uh, to next week's meeting, which I think might be actually shorter, we'll be able to dive into that. Um, uh, I have, um, uh, material that was provided me by, um, our, our city attorney, which I appreciate very much, relative to some of the questions that I had posed during my. I think it was yesterday that I was talking, um, so we'll, we'll present that to council along with. I'm sorry? Yes, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna send that to council, so that we kind of look, almost like homework, we'll give you that, and we'll give you a couple of other municipalities that have addressed this the, the same way. And that way, when we come back and start talking about communication, we're gonna make the, the primary subject of that, uh, conversation, as those people who were a part of that, uh. Uh, of, of that retreat will remember, um. We had three focuses, and we're gonna, we're gonna focus on the community to council, mayor, uh, city administrator, and, um, and we to they, um, to, to the community. Um, communication, to see how we might be able to, um, come up with some strategies that, uh, you know, become institutionalized essentially, to make our conversations more useful. And, uh, and, you know, uh, more productive, so, uh, so with that, I'll send you tomorrow, yes, Cecilia?
Yeah, I just wanted to perform a motion for, for next. Do I do that now, or would I do that?
No, next, we, we, we'll actually talk to me, and we'll get it on the agenda, okay? Um, not to, not to catch, but, uh, he will, that's, that's, that's what we'll do then, sure, sure, and, um, and again, um. In terms of, uh, the need for executive session, I, I don't believe, certainly, I'm not gonna call for an executive session this evening, so unless somebody else is a client to Katie, are you?
I just, no, I just wanted to say, could we skip over the additional business slash council?
Oh, no, I'll come back to it, I just wanna, I just, this, like, looking at the high points on the agenda that need to be taken care of, and then we can, uh, so if nobody else is gonna be introducing the need for an executive session, then we can talk about additional business council consideration, we can do that right now. So anybody, Katie, I bet you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, ultimately, I'm glad that you proposed that we deray the decision on the sale of twenty-seven Market Street, I kind of read a room on that one. Um, and that's what I had hoped would happen, um, I am. Disappointed, maybe, and I wrote notes about my feelings, I think that, um. The. I wanna say problem, but some, any issue that's been identified is that council has not been involved in the process, and I think, once again, you know, you kind of read the room. And made a decision on our behalf, rather than allowing us to make a decision.
Well, the proposal is per council approval, I, I said as much, and, and in fact, it was written on the slide, it's per your approval, it's not, I, I, I'm not, you can, you can have a vote on, on next, next Tuesday, if you like.
I mean, I just think that, you know, we're sort of saying, like. Allow council to discuss things, figure out where we land, decide what we wanna do, and saying, you know, I heard you, so we won't, is, is, is helpful, and it's a step, but I think that really, the step that needs to happen is that. We are allowed to make the decisions that are council decisions.
Of course.
I, I don't feel that we've been given that opportunity on this, on this specific process, um. So, I just wanted to say that, because we're. You know, it's ten thirty, or I might have called for the executive session just to have, you know, a council discussion on it, but. Oh, no, I'm ten. Okay, so, yeah, so even more so, my point, um, you know, I think that. If it were earlier, maybe I would have said, you know, this is a good opportunity, and the council will discuss it. Um. So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think that going forward, this needs to be a council driven process.
Appreciate it. Sure, so Cecilia, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank you, um, and Greg. Uh, and then other, uh, staff who worked on the presentation today on the, uh, proposal, or against the plans, the actual plan. Uh, that were presented to the public in the lobby of the. But it was really well, it was well attended, and I think it gave people a sense of what it was set with this project, that they didn't have prior. So, thank you for doing that.
Uh, anybody else have anything for council? If we don't, then, um, we'll see everybody here on April second, and this meeting is adjourned.